Welcome everyone to our Baker County Board of County Commissioners meeting, April 1st, April Fool's Day. If you believe in that sort of thing, I don't. Anyway, if I ask if you have any device that makes noise, phone, pagers, if you would put them on silent or vibrate, please not disturb the meeting. If you want to speak with the board, the speaker card's on the center table in the back. If you want to fill one out, get it to Ms. Kayla or Ms. Sarah, they'll get it to me and I'll let you speak at the appropriate time. And with that, we have a guest that's going to do the prayer and Mr., my boss man here is going to be doing the pledge.
Mr. Larry. That's right. Mr. Both, if you could come up and say the prayer for us tonight, we'd be honored.
Would stand. Let us pray. Father God, we love you and praise you and thank you for this day. Thank you for the opportunity that you've given us to freely to come to discuss the needs of our community. Father, and I lift up all the leaders of our community. I pray for our county commissioners and their families, Father God. I pray that you bless them with wisdom, bless them with your Holy Spirit to lead God to them to make the decisions that is best for this community, Father. And God, I pray for this meeting. I pray that your Holy Spirit would enter in, Father, and each thing is discussed, well, God, let it be discussed with the same love, grace, and mercy that you have shown us. And God, we ask all these things, in Jesus' name. Amen.
If you would please stand and follow me, the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in liberty, justice, and for all. I'm sorry, got a dude up there.
All right, we're moving to our agenda. I'm going to ask Ms. Sarah, I've asked her if we had moved item number one under the elected officials down to item number 11, so that we're not here holding a lot of the other items up for discussion, if that would be okay with the board?
Yes, sir. I do have one other change, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Just a correction, on page two for the public hearing, we do have a name that's wrong. Ordinance 2025-04 should be listed as a rezoning for Rollerson.
Rollerson?
Yes, sir.
And which one was that, 2204?
Yes, sir.
Rollerson.
2025-04, item number two.
Mr. Chairman, I'm glad to put a motion forward with that, but before I do, I'd like some clarification on the legal side of what we need to do as far as minutes. We've been put on notification by the clerk that the taking minutes is her responsibility, and under no circumstances is the county to proceed to do minutes. It's her responsibility. And I'd like to understand from our attorney, what is it that we need to do since and for the last 10 years that I've been here? We've had somebody here on the county side take those minutes and record the minutes and so forth, and it's come before this board, but since we've been advised that that is not our responsibility, it's another constitutional officer, I'd like to understand what are our obligations as the commission today to record the meeting, as we have in the past, that has served as copy, as well as the written minutes that has been typed up since then? What are our requirements today? Because I think that's important for us to know what we need to do as we proceed through the meeting.
Thank you, Commissioner. So, I'm actually, I was trying to pull up the statute. If I remember right, it's section 125.17. Talks, is the statute that talks about the clerk's responsibility in that statute says that "The clerk of the circuit court for the county shall be the clerk and accountant of the board of county commissioners. He or she shall keep their minutes and accounts and perform other such other duties as their clerk and," I'm sorry, "as the board may direct." So, you direct how minutes take place. I look at that, or in my experience, that really is more to what level of detail you want to see in the minutes, since the clerk serves as the ex officio kind of clerk to the board. As far as recording, it's a, that's really a transparency and that's a convenience that's provided to your constituents. There's not a legal obligation to record. There were actually some Attorney General's opinions a little while back where some boards were asking if they could, instead of take minutes, just have a copy, a digital copy of the recording, and the response to that from the Attorney General's office was no. You still have to take minutes, that having a recording, audio, or video didn't change that.
Thank you, sir. In reading the letter that we received, it clearly says, "As I am the clerk to the board, all minute keeping functions for the board of the county commissioners are charged as a matter of law to this office." Very specifically says, "I will no longer permit anyone else to keep the board's minutes. All such functions should be released to this office immediately, and the board should not approve any minutes that were not prepared through this office." So, we have minutes on our agenda to be approved today, that we've been told by the constitutional officer whose statutory responsibility is to produce those minutes, to do not approve those. So, I'm asking these questions now because it comes to what do we do with our agenda? Because clearly, if this is the case, if we was to follow this, then we cannot, we've got to modify our consent agenda as well.
I would advise you that based on the clerk's letter, to defer until we have some indication that the minutes that were prepared for March 18th have been approved by the clerk's office.
Okay. And as far as today's meeting, is there any issue with us continuing to have the meeting recorded? However, the county administration office will not be preparing those minutes.
I, I'm not aware of a problem with that, no, sir.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Who will be preparing the minutes for today?
My understanding, based on the clerk's letter from yesterday, that clerk's office would prepare the minutes for today.
From the video recording?
I, I don't know how that would happen.
Is anyone from the clerk's office here now? Are you doing the minutes? Okay. Is somebody from the clerk's office here?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
May I ask, are y'all doing the TDC meeting minutes tomorrow and everything else going Just today?
Okay. Well, Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to, I make a motion that we approve the agenda with the modifications as follows. Number three under consent agenda, remove or defer item number one for the minutes from March 18th, 2025, defer to the next meeting or until such time that we have clarifications on the minutes and of this, or else the clerk prepares those minutes and brings them back to this board for review and approval. Furthermore, the modification to the agenda, to move item number one under elected officials down to item number 11 under new business.
Second.
And finally, the third one is the adjustment, Rollerson's name, on ordinance number two under first public hearing.
Okay. Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay. We're moving to our next item on the agenda, which is approval of the consent agenda with the changes.
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All those opposed, same sign. Motion still carries. Elected officials. Is there any elected officials here today? None here. We will move to our next item on the, which is public comment section, and Mr. Porterfield, I have a card for you.
Mayor Porterfield, commanding officer of Baker County Veteran Council, 7460 Dunford Road. First of all, I want to thank you guys so much for the airators at the lake. They are fantastic. The water, we've got four of them. I didn't know we was getting four, but it's fantastic.
Yes, sir.
The water has never been clear. I mean, it's crystal clear. Now, I wanted to pass out a couple of pictures. There are some algae that there, and I don't know if it's from the pollen or whether it's something, because it is, it's really horrendous on that southwest side, where the gate is on the southwest side. I've got a couple of pictures of that different direction off that, I teach one of you.
We'll pass them down if you want.
Maybe we'll please.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Bennett wants three of each.
No, I was trying to figure out what you, I didn't realize you had multiple copies, one for each of us.
Got, got, there are two different angles.
Okay.
Now, I don't know if that's caused from the pollen or whether, you know, what it is, but it's very, it's completely covered southwest end, and I don't know that stuff, and that may be the, you got the lake doctor, they could come in and spray it, and it would dissipate, I'm not sure. But it is, it is really, really thick. Anything can be done, you know, before a fishing derby, which would be four weeks from this Saturday, April 26th, for children's fishing derby. Yes, Mr. Bennett, you have a question?
No, I'm letting you finish. We're good. I'm just going to make a comment, please.
But I, I just wondered about that. But again, I want to thank you so much for the airators. They're, they're working good. On the fishing part of it, I personally, in the last month, have put in over 125 fish the third week of February, another 125 the first week of this month, of March, and the smallest I put in were six inches. Six inches on up, I got, I put catfish in there that, you got a picture of hell up there to my chest, or my chin, it's down to my waist. And there's a couple of large bass in there like that. I've been going down every day since I put them in and throwing fish food out there to them, and they are really taking hold now. But I'm going to stop feeding them like the Monday or Tuesday before our children's fishing derby, so maybe they'll get hungry, come up when the kids go to bathing. Okay? And on the fishing derby, I would, each year we have, we request one extra port-a-thon.
Yes, sir.
And I'd like to have, if I could get two this year, if at all possible. And if they get ready to put them in, they, you know, get in touch with me and I'll place, I'll show them where we need to have a place. But that would help us tremendously. And really, that's about it. But again, I want to thank you so much for those area. And now that we've done it, I talked to Chris, and he said that he'll be there first thing tomorrow morning, 8:00, start fixing that road up. You're parking that, is that right, Chris? That what you told me?
Chris is parked up on that one.
Anyway, if we get that straightened up before the fishing derby, it'd be absolutely fantastic.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you guys so much for the work.
One of the things I did want to say, if we do have somebody go out and spray that algae, be very careful that you don't go out and try to spray everything and kill everything at one time. When you spray that and it starts to decay and rot, it can suck the oxygen out of the water, and you'll start having fish die from suffocation. So, be careful that you don't go just broadcast and kill everything at one time. You have to do it in some steps to be able to do that, so.
It's always easier on that one end now, because we had a north wind, which blown it all down to that one end at this very time.
Again, just make sure whoever's doing it understands, if there's a large volume of that, be careful, because it can create, it can cause a loss of fish from, and so you just be cognizant of that.
And I'm going to, this Friday, I'm going to put another 125 in, that's right.
It may be a situation where you just want to add algae carp to the pond, and they'll keep the algae beat down.
Well, see, I suggested that in the past, get that, grass eating carp.
Yep. We have to get a.
Yeah, get a permit.
For those, because they're so close to that river.
Right.
They might not let you do it.
That's what I thought.
That river floods into that pond, and them algae carp get into, they're real sensitive of that.
We've, we've worked on that, that before and really to know that, but thank you for the suggestion.
I mean, we can look into it, but I'm thinking that's what you want to find.
Yes, sir. Mr. Chairman, if I could, we actually do, we have a, a lake management company that manages the water quality. Actually, we're just there a couple of days ago. The report showed that there was some heavy algae there.
Okay.
So, they're aware of it, and they're working on the treatment for it.
Who was that? Was it the Lake Doctors?
It, it is the Lake Doctors. They changed their name. It's not, I always forget what their new name is, but it is the Lake Doctors. And they did actually suggest grass eating, or algae eating carp a few years ago, and we looked at that, and I don't remember all of the details, but decided against it at the time, which is why we went with the airators, and Mr. Larry stole my thunder. The airators have been installed at Veterans Memorial Park, but we're really excited to see that project.
I thought we were just getting, but we got four of them.
Yes, sir. Without the size of pond needed, that many, but yes, we're, we're excited about it, and it will see a significant improvement with the algae with those airators. They've just been in about two weeks now. Actually, no, not even two weeks, about a week.
But say that the water, it has never been clear.
Yes, sir. But they are working on the algae. They're aware of it, and they're, they're addressing it.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Moving to our next item on the agenda, which is new business and proclamation, April sexual assault awareness. Mallory Warner.
Good evening. First, I would like to thank the county commissioners for your continued dedication to supporting survivors within Baker County by declaring April Sexual Assault Awareness Month. Your support makes an incredible impact on those who have been affected by sexual violence. My name is Hope Timoney. I'm the lead rural victim advocate for Baker County with the Women's Center of Jacksonville. And with me, I have Mallory Warner, and she's the director of the rape recovery team at W C J. This year, our theme is Together We Act, United We Change. It is only with the help and support of the community that we are able to spread education, the importance of understanding and validation, and demand the respect of consent. We can enact change when we stand together in full support of survivors and their loved ones, thus creating a safer and more empowering community. Everyone deserves to live in an environment where they are treated with respect, and we believe Baker County is committed to supporting its residents, which is evident in the incredible amount of businesses and agencies that have participated in our annual Paint the Town Teal campaign. Paint the Town Teal spreads the message that Baker County listens, believes, and supports survivors, as well as promotes open conversation on the impact of sexual violence in the community and what local resources are available to help. The W C J is committed to support those who have been affected by sexual violence by way of advocacy, counseling, education, and a 24-hour crisis hotline, where anyone is encouraged to call to receive validation, access to a forensic exam, and gain information during the most difficult time of their life. Our purpose is to help all survivors and their loved ones feel empowered to make the best decisions for themselves and their healing journey, whatever way that may look like. However, it is not, not all up to us at the W C J. It truly takes a village, and we know that Baker County is a village that stands up for the rights and understanding of survivors. Together, we can bring forth the change needed for all generations so that they may know respect, dignity, and a firm understanding of the meaning of consent. Thank you for your continued support for survivors by declaring April 2025 Sexual Assault Awareness Month.
Thank you very much. Rich, can you read the proclamation into the minutes?
Okay. For Sexual Assault Awareness Month, the proclamation for April 2025. April marks Sexual Assault Awareness Month, a time to bring attention to the widespread issue of sexual violence and empower communities to take action. This year's theme, Together We Act, United We Change, highlights the power of working together to create safer, more respectful environments for sexual abuse, assault, harassment affects individuals of every background. To address this, we must promote education around consent, healthy communications, and bystander intervention. By equipping individuals and communities with these tools, we can help prevent violence before it starts and foster a culture of respect and care. Central to this campaign is the importance of amplifying the voices of survivors, especially those most vulnerable in our communities. Their experiences must be heard and acknowledged, and their stories should guide our efforts to combat sexual violence in all its forms. Everyone in our communities deserves to live in a safe and supportive environment where they are treated with respect. When our workplaces, schools, and communities work together to uphold safety and respect, we make progress in preventing sexual abuse, assault, and harassment. Statistics show most women and men across all sexual identities who experience contact sexual violence reported that the person who harmed them was someone they knew. Over 53% of women and over 29% of men reported experiencing contact sexual violence. One in five male victims. Reported only male perpetrators. One in two had only female perpetrators, and about one in six had both male and female perpetrators. More than one in four non-Hispanic black women, 29% in the United States, were raped in their lifetime. One in three Hispanic women, 34.8%, reported unwanted sexual contact in their lifetime. More than four in five American Indian and Native American women, 84.3%, have experienced violence in their lifetime. 32.9% of adults with intellectual disabilities have experienced sexual violence. 47% of all transgender people have been sexually assaulted at some point in their lives. Together We Act, United We Change. By standing in solidarity, we can build a future free from sexual violence and create a world where everyone is safe, valued, and respected. That is the proclamation, Mr. Sheriff.
Thank you very much. Most pleasure to the board.
Move to approve proclamation as read.
Second.
A motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay, we're moving into item number two, recognition and promotion. Mr. Nelson.
Thank you for this opportunity tonight to present a joyous event for fire rescue, and I'm actually going to have Chief Blanton come up and do a little bit more presentation about this, about promoting two new lieutenants in the fire rescue department. So, Chief, you want to come up?
We don't get much of an opportunity to, you know, in the world that we live in, something bad happens, it steals, you know, the biggest news out there, but we've had a good thing happen here. Our department, as y'all know, over the course of the last several years, you took the Baker County paid EMS department and merged it with the volunteer fire department and went into the fire rescue business, and it created a whole new world where we had to have people that were trained and dual certified in both disciplines, and in the process of that, in the early couple of years, if you had to have a promotion or something of those, of that nature, you simply honestly, the number of people for the number of promotions, there wasn't a broad range. And we've reached a point now that we had a couple lieutenant positions that opened up, and we had six or seven people within the department that had the time on the job, had gone to school, got the certifications, and we're all in a position that could compete for that. And this is probably something new to the county, it's definitely new to this department, but we set out at the end of last summer and created a comprehensive testing process that all these people had to participate in. They all had to have, like I said, multiple criteria and certifications to be able to test for this, but we had over 800 pages of study material. It was a two-day process. They had a written test. We brought in assessors that were from out of the county that were neutral to these people that didn't know our employees, that went over scenario-based questions and things of that nature. We took job evaluations, seniority points, to all put together a total package of something that we felt like we were looking for the cream of the crop, the best we could have. And when it was all said and done, we, the two young men that are with us tonight, Tyler Richardson and Carson Crawford came out number one and number two, and they've done an outstanding job, and we are proud as we can be of what they do for us. They are, I don't know, they are a vision for the future, and the county needed to know this, and we're proud of them.
Bring them up.
Yes, sir.
Just want to thank the Lord for this opportunity. My fiance, Laura, it was 30 long days of me studying like eight hours a day. She never complained. Also, my family. Just want to thank you guys for this opportunity also, without you giving us a budget to be able to stand these positions. So, thank you for that. I also want to thank these two gentlemen here, two great mentors. They put in some guidelines, some SOPs, some standards of how we do our job. We are now, I'll have to say this, working in the field, going on these big calls with the J F R Ds, the Nassau counties. We're actually well-respected department now. We had a huge incident the other night, soggy bottom mud pit, and thankfully for these guidelines and SOPs that these two have put in, it actually went pretty smooth, and we look like true, you know, heroes, which we come to work and we try to be professionals, not heroes. So, I just want to thank, say thank y'all again, and God bless.
Any commissioners want to say anything?
About to say it all already. Just thank the Lord, thank my wife for supporting me through that process. It was long rolling, but it made us better, no matter the outcome. But yeah, I thank, I thank Chief, we have some Chief Blanton, they have been just amazing through the whole process and our developments since we started. I just want to thank y'all as well for everything y'all do behind the scenes. It makes it all possible, and it just makes what we do possible, so, thank you.
Absolutely. I'll say, I mean, we got two great young men standing in front of us, and the future's bright, and we appreciate it and all your hard work and dedication.
And I will say, they're both graduates of Baker County. One of them may be kin to me, but they're still fine people.
Well, again, I think what happens, you guys, you guys see a lot of things that most of us do not see, will see. That's your profession you chose, but it's one of those that behind the scenes, it makes a difference every day, especially those that need the service. You don't think about that until you need it. When something's wrong with your family member, you or your family member, and that call comes in, there's a lot of relief when somebody shows up that knows what they're doing, so I encourage you. I appreciate y'all's effort to continue to learn and grow, and I encourage you to continue to do so as well, because the learning is not, doesn't stop now, it just continues to grow, and I would encourage you to continue to do that, but I thank you for your efforts and what you continue to do.
Yeah, I want to thank both chiefs for what they do in setting this program. They came to us with an idea, and it was a great idea to have stat steps in y'all's organization, and it's just an honor to see two young men that's born and bred here in Baker County, stepping up to serve their community. And you're, you don't have an easy job. I've been in some of the situations that y'all have been in, and I couldn't do it. So, I know what you're going through sometimes, but let me tell you something, son, always lean on God. Both of y'all said thank God first, and that makes, as long as you're leaning on Him, you're going to be okay. And also lean on your, your help, your supervisors. When you need someone to talk to, you talk to them. Don't be such a man that you don't think you can't talk to anybody. Find you somebody to talk to. All right.
With promotion comes responsibility. You know what's ahead of you.
Yes, sir.
But thanks for your commitment to the people of Baker County.
Proud of y'all.
Thank you. Thank y'all. Appreciate it.
Mr. Chairman, if I could make a comment on that real fast?
Yes, sure.
I just, Lieutenant Crawford mentioned it, but we had a pretty significant incident just over the state line Friday night in Charlton County at the soggy bottom mud bog, I think is the official name of it there. It was a very serious situation, and I just want to say a special thank you to, to the department. They showed up, actually heard from some folks in Charlton County who were quite relieved when they heard a Baker County voice come over the radio and say, "Help is on the way."
Amen.
And I just want to be able to thank them for being able to do that. I know Chief Blanton was on, on scene, he was on call this weekend, and so he was the chief that was, that responded to that, and I just like, I want to make sure that the community is aware of that. They do a good job here in Baker County, but not just here. They, you know, that, that was above and beyond the call of duty, and our neighboring counties are appreciative of it.
Yeah, I've heard some good things from that situation, so we appreciate it, and we couldn't have had it without full-time staff.
Yep.
So, that, that's the difference. We appreciate that.
Should be a point of pride for the people of Baker County.
Amen.
Definitely.
Anything else on that? If not, we'll move into our next item on the agenda. Mr. Nelson, where'd you go?
Right here, sir. Yes, sir, it's, it's time to apply for another grant. This is a firehouse subs grant. This is that grant, when you go in and they ask you to round up your, for your sub and This is that grant, when you go in and they ask you to round up your, for your sub, and put a little money in the little box up by the cash register, all that money goes back into fire rescue and public safety. We're able to apply for this every three years, and it's time to apply. We'd like to apply for a new set of HERS tool for the Glen St. Mary engine. The set that we have on there is about eight years old, and it started giving us some maintenance issues, and we'd like to apply for a new set. Would it be a newer generation than we have now? It's got some new safety technology included in it. It'll help our guys do their job a little bit easier and a little faster, so.
What would you do with the old pair? Move it to a different station?
As long as the maintenance doesn't become a problem, we would move it up to a slower engine up in the Kyler Station. Yes, sir.
Most pleasure to the board.
Make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, sir.
Okay, we're moving to our next item on the agenda, which is item number four, approval of ship bid results. Miss, I ain't gonna try to say it, 'cause I'll already mess it up.
Been here long enough, you should be able to pronounce it.
I still can't say it. There's just some things I can't say, and that's one of them.
Good evening, Commissioners.
You don't want me to call you Mango, do you?
You would be surprised how often that happens. Good evening, Commissioners. I am here to implore you to allow us to open and accept the third round of bids for a rehabilitation project. This is for a roof and a septic. And again, this is the third go-around, and the responses really have not changed in as far as the number. So we currently have one singular bid for the roof and two bids for the septic, and I would like to open, first of all, I would like to request to be able to go ahead and open them.
You have them with you?
I do.
Mr. Chairman, like Lydia stated, we've gone through multiple rounds. We have not gotten a full responsive bid with multiple bidders in the previous responses, which is why we've advertised this multiple times. We had one that bid on part and didn't bid on the other, and so we did not have a complete set of bids to give you all. So we continued to advertise in hopes to be able to give a complete set of bids. Purchasing policy requires if one bid is received, we do have to get instruction from the board to open that or not. So we feel comfortable with the companies that have submitted proposals. They're familiar with the program and familiar with the work. And obviously, we know a ballpark on where we need to be, but we don't know if that bid is in line with that without opening it first.
We can open them under the recognition that we can turn down the bid.
Correct.
So with that, most pleasure to the board.
I'd move that we open the bids as requested.
Second.
Want to do the roof first?
Just do the roof first with the numbers.
The roof is $27,500, submitted by HCA Construction and Roofing.
That's roof only?
I'm sorry?
That's roof only?
That is roof only, yes, sir.
I'm gonna have to...
And that is under the maximum award limit.
I'm gonna have to see the scope of work on that size of the roof before I...
It's a large house.
Before I approve it.
You should have your, you should have your square footage in there, I believe.
It don't have size, so...
If I remember correctly, I believe it's a four-bedroom house. It has multiple additions on it, and it is a metal roof, so they're replacing it with metal.
Lydia, was it in your bid packet?
I don't have the square footage anywhere.
Not in the bid packet?
Mm-mm. 'Cause everybody who came to the walkthrough physically was on-site, and so they knew how big it was. If I had to venture a guess, I'd say minimum 2,000 square foot, but I honestly think it's bigger.
I hope it's bigger.
Hang on, we'll tell you.
So you're going back to metal?
I'm sorry?
Would it be cheaper to go by singles?
What's the specification was metal? And what's that? Why is that? Is it singles now?
Homeowner preference.
Homeowner don't have a preference when we do a ship?
Unless they wanna pay the extra.
Is it already metal? Yeah, it's already metal, and it can't be...
Okay.
We can't metal over it, yes.
It's already metal. You have to do metal. Okay, that makes more sense. It's gonna be hard for me, as a roofer, to approve a job on one bid on something I don't even know when they're bidding, the size of the scope.
I have the square footage, Commissioner, if you're ready. 2,005 is the square footage on the home, total. 2,005 square feet.
And that house does have a complete wraparound porch as well, under that roof.
Is that square footage including the porch?
Yes.
From here, no. Based on the information that I'm looking at, no, sir. That would just be the homeowner, not the porches.
That's the home.
Yes, sir. So it'll be larger than 2,005 square feet.
I can tell you, the number of contractors that I know that were roofing between the three walk-throughs that showed up was...
Probably scared of it.
Has been six, total, amongst the three. And the homeowners have been incredibly patient.
I just ran the numbers on it, and if it's what you say it is, and I figured 3,000 square feet still have, without looking at the roof itself.
Is this critical that we approve it today, or would we have an opportunity to defer it to the next meeting, maybe give you an opportunity to see if you're comfortable with it? This is your area of knowledge, and if we don't believe that that's a reasonable price, then I would agree to defer until we have such bids. But unless it's something critical, then I hit...
And it could be good. It's just hard to me to say, without looking at a roof. I've done the numbers on 3,000 square foot. Unless it's cut up, chopped up, terrible roof, I just, I didn't come up with that number. I'm not gonna say what I came up with. I didn't come up with that number.
I'll be honest, my main concern, I don't have a problem deferring it. Like I said, the homeowners have been incredibly patient. They're starting to get worried the closer we get to hurricane season.
Of course, I understand.
And I'm not sure running it again, we're gonna get any better responses. I mean, you know, we've been through it three times, and in all honesty, the same contractor is the only one that has submitted all three times.
But I don't submit just for the simple fact that I'm a Baker County Commissioner...
Right, no, and I understand that.
I can, but it's a sealed bid, but I still don't do it.
Right.
'Cause I don't want... It's up to the board.
We can push it off tonight.
I would recommend that we defer until we get the square footage of the roof.
I make a motion that we defer the item to the next meeting to have a better understanding of the roof makeup and so forth, but have it on the agenda for the next meeting for discussion and action.
I have a motion in a second to defer. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Now, are we opening and accepting, or excuse me, are we accepting and then opening the septics?
Yes, we can go ahead and open the septics.
Okay.
And we're not turning down the bid.
Right, no, I understand that.
All we're doing is deferring the answer until we can get the scope of the work, and then we'll do it.
Yes, sir. This one was turned in by John Williams Plumbing, and it is $10,431.
And which one we're talking about?
It's the same one, it's just this was...
It's 205B, which is the septic only.
Okay.
Same residence, though. Lydia just said different.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, same residence.
All right. What was it again? I'm sorry.
$10,431 even.
You got two bids on this?
I do.
Okay.
The second one is from Superior Septic Services, and theirs is for $12,000 even.
And I know both of them, and they're both good contractors. So what's the pleasure to the board?
What was that second bid amount?
12,000.
And who was that? I'm sorry, I didn't write it.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was Superior.
Superior Septic.
Okay. The low, apparently bid was John Williams.
John Williams.
Correct, yes, for 10,431.
Make a motion that we approve the low bid 10,431 to John Williams Plumbing for the project.
Second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Okay, how do we wanna handle this with the deferment of the first one, of the roofing project?
We can move forward with John Williams on the septic, it has nothing to do with the roof.
Okay.
So the max waiver...
So you want me to do the max waiver?
We'll do the max waiver after we find out what the complete amount is going to be.
Okay.
And I'll move. It won't take long to know.
Okay.
Matter of fact, I need you to get me the address.
Yes, sir, we will.
It's probably okay, but I just don't like throwing money away.
On a very tight program.
And then the next one, this is for a change order. This project is for the Van Project, which is demolition to construction replacement. It is located in the town of Glen. This project was bid out with the understanding that town septic, or excuse me, town sewer was coming to that address. Things are not happening that way, and we are being forced, in order to keep the project moving forward, to install a septic system. So the contractor in charge of that project reached out, got a quote. The quote is from John Williams Plumbing for $11,225. And that's still, even with that dollar amount, if you approve, that they are still under their max award limit. So there would not need to, I apologize, yeah, there would not need to be a waiver.
So if we approve this change order, this is to put the septic tank in now, right?
Yes, sir.
And then if sewer gets there end of the year...
Supposedly, yeah. Supposedly, it's not gonna be there until September.
Okay. And then we're putting it on the town of Glen sewer at that time, right?
We are not, but the homeowner will have that option, yes.
Okay, but that would not come through here for them to pay the connection or whatever?
No, no. We're not having to do any of that.
Is there gonna be, is there going to be a requirement placed on the homeowner to make a connection to the sewer system?
I cannot speak for the town of Glen on that.
She's here, Mayor's here. I was gonna say, the mayor is here. I'm not sure if she wants to speak on the spot.
I'm asking a question, and Mayor Pageant, if you may, you may know, we're moving forward with putting in a septic system at this location because the water sewer is not there yet, but it is forthcoming. Once it is placed there adjacent to this property, does the town have a timeline by which the residents shall make connection from their sewer lines to the city water sewer? Is there a requirement to do that?
There is a requirement, but where it costs runs down, we have very little, very little amount of sewer capacity, so it might not have to... Why can't this use a certain, their septic tank for a few months, correct?
The current septic tank?
It's not viable.
It's not working, yeah. I think that septic tank was not gonna probably pass inspection again.
Someone was put in a portable tank, and used it temporarily.
This particular homeowner is not going to be able to do that.
To put the temporary system in?
There's some limitations with this homeowner. This is the one we actually spoke about several months ago that had some assistance with some local organizations that were helping her because of her ability to go through the process and make sure she understands how we're going through the process. So there may be some limitations on coming back at a later date to rectify this situation. So we wanna make sure we leave her with a usable product now while we're there, and while she has the help and the understanding of how the program works. I believe Mayor Pageant's saying that you all may lift the restriction for the requirement.
We would, yes.
Okay.
The proposed price is very close to in line with what we've seen from the other ones, so my recommendation would be to move forward with the change order, to allow this to be done, to get the residents finished, to get it done, because while it is an intent for the city, or for the town of Glen to have water sewer connections there, there is no guarantee it's gonna happen on the timeline that's proposed. We can't wait indefinitely with this one. And since this requirement's not gonna pass inspections otherwise, I would suggest that we move forward. And we would ask, as part of that, that the town of Glen seriously consider the expenses that we're putting in in public dollars, and not ask the resident to make additional expenditures to connect to it since we are having, because the situation was not created by them. But I'm glad to put a motion on the floor that we move forward with approving the change orders as requested.
Second. A motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Okay, it's 5:47, and we are on item number...
CDBG Grant Administration, what is that?
Six. Let's go ahead with item number six.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. County staff issued RFP 2005-25-04 for the CDBG Grant Administration. We were so fortunate to receive a housing grant through the CDBG program. However, there is some oversight that is needed on that funding, to make sure that we're meeting all of our requirements there. So two proposals were received from Assist to Build and InTouch Consulting. County staff consisting of myself, Ladonna Combs, and Lydia Mangano were the review team on these proposals. Our score sheets are attached for your review. After we completed our review and scoring, staff does recommend InTouch Consulting. InTouch is based out of Lava, but has extensive knowledge of Baker County. In fact, staff Spencer Neighbors is actually here with us if there are any questions. But Spencer has worked with Baker County previously through our former grants administrator that we had with us as a contract, and also Spencer has been the long-term grant writer and administrator for the city of McLennan. So he is very well-versed in the CDBG program and local Baker County knowledge as well. But again, we reviewed those and ranked InTouch Consulting as the number-one firm for that. Staff recommends awarding RFP 2025-04 to InTouch Consulting Group. I'll be happy to answer any questions if there are any.
Yes. How do you move forward with this? Do you negotiate rates or prices, or how do you move forward with the...
His price has been included, and that was actually one of the reasons why he was ranked slightly higher. On the next item on your agenda is the contract for InTouch Consulting, and we'll go into that in a little more detail. But the grant allows up to a 15% administration fee, and InTouch is actually suggesting or requesting a 13.5%, so he's not even requesting the max allowable.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Most pleasure to the board.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. Have a motion in second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Let's go into item number seven.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. Again, this is the contract that accompanies the previous item we just discussed with InTouch Consulting Group. This contract totals $101,250, which amounts to 13.5% of the total grant amount. Grant guidelines do allow for up to 15% to be used for administration. Should the county need to, we do have a 1.5% should there be any kind of office supplies necessary, or Lydia's time in assisting with this to offset her salary instead of, you know, maybe ship funds or things like that, we could offset if necessary. We're not saying that we need to, but we do have a little bit of extra wiggle room on the admin fee if we need it. Again, the grant totals $750,000, and totals approximately 30 months for timeline completion. Again, staff recommends approval of the contract with InTouch Consulting Group in a total of $101,250. in a total of one hundred, one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars.
Move to approve.
Second. Motion second, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion carries.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, we're gonna move into item number eight, Mr. Blanchard. How quick are you gonna be?
We're gonna be very quick.
Okay.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, want to touch base with you, let you know about the progress we're making with the, uh, three storms and some of our projects. Uh, we mentioned to you that, uh, we had some people that were displaced in the hotels. We're still at the number of twelve. Uh, we're waiting for our next update, which is actually Wednesday from FEMA to see about those twelve, some of the others, um, have moved out of the hotels, and we're still waiting with some other organizations to see how and where they are ending up. Uh, we have some, uh, I'm gonna let Dennis step in and talk about our Long Term Recovery Group and how we're associated with them.
So if I had it marked for the year, go ahead and bring it to the front now. The Long Term Recovery Group, LTRG it's called, on Thursday the third, at ten o'clock at the Sheriff's Office, we are bringing together a slew of folks from FEMA, Red Cross, Salvation Army, United Way, coming in to build an organization, Long Term Recovery Group, to help those folks navigate what comes next. Can't really tell you what it looks like at this point, but we've got a lot of players coming to the table, and we should move pretty quickly and come up with some solutions and some options for those folks that are, that don't have long-term housing to go back to. I'll draw your attention, so, uh, instead of, just gonna give you a, an expedited, uh, version of, of the update. In front of you have the, panned out with forty-eight oh six and Debbie. Those list our projects there, and I'm just gonna touch on them briefly, one at a time. Uh, so the first one is, uh, the seven nine six, three one five, and that is the countywide roads. We had to make some adjustments, and that project is still in process. We are due to have a, a meeting on Thursday, and we should be making some more progress there, we had to go back and regroup on that, but nothing has really changed as far as, uh, the outcome from the county perspective at this juncture. Next one is the boat ramp. We are moving forward with the boat ramp, we're starting now, we've got the Unified Federal Review going on, and so we're bringing in EPA, we're bringing in the Corps of Engineers, uh, Riverkeeper, and those folks are coming to the table to try to expedite. Uh, I should mention right up front that all of the RFPs, Sarah's hoping to have those to us forthwith in the next day or two, and we should be getting out to start getting some quotes in on these individual products, projects, and move from estimates to actually what the, what the quotes are.
The RFPs are complete, they're just being reviewed right now, and then we'll submit those to the team for their review before they're advertised.
I have a question. This is the boat ramp project, to relocate the boat ramp and everything, right?
Yes, sir.
Is this not being handled by FWC?
No, sir, FWC is allowing for the repairs, like we've talked about before, we're gonna do some temporary repairs on the current boat ramps to allow it to be usable while the construction is going on, and our scope of work through this FEMA process reflects that.
So, so moving forward with the discussions that was going on this week, with FWC wanting a response...
Yes, sir.
That is perfectly okay to move forward, and it does not jeopardize this, because this, if, um, wasn't this project a, it was a lot more than two hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars?
It still is, to be honest with you, that's, that's a FEMA thing where they do it in stages, it's still projected to be what it was.
Nine hundred plus thousand, so, so this project is not being jeopardized by the work that's being done through FWC project?
No, sir, it's, it's in joint, I said FWC wants to see the repairs done, and FEMA has stated that that's acceptable as long as our scope says that that's the process we're doing, yes, sir.
So how quick can we make those repairs?
I know you were gonna ask that.
We're moving as fast as we can.
It all starts with the RFPs, and then the process goes from there.
We're getting ready to advertise.
At a month at a minimum before we get all of our quotes.
Yeah, do you remember what...
How long a minimum?
I would say a month at least, it's a two-week period, we extended it by two weeks based off of...
Yeah, so as long as there's no changes to the RFP documents, the bids will be due May twenty-seventh, and then work can begin, once the bids are awarded by the board.
That, I mean, that has nothing to do with FEMA approving, that's correct?
Well, I, I would, that is true, has nothing to do with that, I will state again, FEMA process is a reimbursement process, so...
Right.
The county can start spending money to, to move forward, once that whole process of the project is approved...
Right.
At the county's desire, the FEMA process is a reimbursement process.
But if you start before you have the approval process, it's not eligible for reimbursement.
That's correct.
Correct.
Exactly.
So you gotta get approvals before you, before you start expending dollars, or else you can expend all you want, but don't expect to get reimbursed.
And you could lose the grant, you could lose the money.
Yes.
Maximizing the potential for reimbursement, yes, sir.
That's why we keep beating that drum.
So our next project is, does satisfy your questions?
Yes.
You answered his question, it's not satisfied, I think is the right answer to that.
The next project to Shoals Park that is moving along, uh, in progression, there's a, a handful of back-and-forth conversations going on about some potential environmental, uh, changes, so that it would be less impactful on the environment, and we, that's kind of where it's at, hung up with FEMA right now. Next project is Turner Cemetery Bridge. That project is still moving forward, and nothing has really changed, the, the proposal to, to convert to the box culverts is, is still in process, and just making steady progress. Seven thousand is the Steel Bridge Road. We've just finally submitted that project, that had been on, on hold for a handful of different reasons, but we did finally start moving that forward, and we're just now starting to get those customary FEMA response, uh, requests for more information, and so we just started that process today, and it's, uh, it's moving along, uh, progressively. Uh, the next one is Copper Creek, uh, Box Culvert. So this one, the, the project is still moving along, but I did want to make the board aware that in this process, it was just discovered and, and specifically questioned by FEMA, and they're recognizing now that there was damage that occurred prior to Hurricane Debbie that was not repaired, and ultimately there's going to be a deduction of eligible reimbursements based off of that. So if you understand the FEMA process and the way it works, Hurricane Debbie caused this damage, if the damage was pre-Debbie damage, that's not covered under reimbursable expenses for FEMA. So I just wanted to make the board aware of, I think the numbers that Chris had shared was there was several hundred thousand dollars that was identified in damages, there almost certainly gonna be a deduction of that amount from the total reimbursable, uh, eligibility. The project isn't gonna change the price unfortunately, but, um, it is what it is. Uh, seven thousand, twelve is, I, that's the, the box culvert, seven, uh, four, forty-sixteen, that's the one that's already obligated, so we're good to go there. Uh, eight thirty-six is the culvert, so we had to split the roads, a very complicated process, we had to split the two hundred and fifty-four roads into a group of seven roads, a group of sixty roads, and a group of ninety-four roads. And so essentially where we are with that is they had to separate anything that had a culvert, and it could not be considered part of the rest of the dirt roads. We've just begun to make progress on that, it has been submitted, and we're starting to collect. I will add that we've worked very closely in the past few weeks with, uh, Sarah, with the road department, and we're really starting to come together, uh, on getting the documentation that they requested, the damage descriptions, and we've made fantastic progress in the last couple of, of weeks, moving forward on that. That brings us to our last project, which is, uh, forty-eight twenty-eight Halleen, which is the very back page. We just, uh, last week finalized, and had a, a team's call with, uh, with the county departments this morning, and we have finalized exactly what it is we're seeking reimbursement for, there, there was some confusion, fire department, the server for the county, and we had some additional, uh, expenses, uh, for invoices and that kind of thing. We finally came together this morning, got all the documentation and the descriptions that we needed, and it will be submitted, I think, closing business today, it was submitted. You're up to speed.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for keeping pushing, that, that is money that we would not get here at the county, so everything that y'all do, that, everything that you bring is extra money is the way I see it, so thank you for doing it.
The biggest thing we want to make sure, the RFP, once we get the RFP done...
Yeah.
And put out there, and the project approved, then hopefully the boat ramp will move up as far as what we can actually...
Okay.
Okay.
Going into recess five minutes.
We are live now.
Yes, sir. You're live now.
I thought I was alive before.
No, you're live.
I might look dead, but I think I'm live. Anyway, we're going into our public hearing, 6:00 PM public hearing. We have five items. It looks like we're on the first reading for the first. So there will be no actions done tonight.
Everything I have for you this evening is first reading, so no action required. And I think just the first four are mine. Okay, so before I get started, I will say the first three applications, they are all three the exact same zoning request. So if it sounds repetitive, it is repetitive. But we do have three very different scenarios. But they are all three going from Ag 7.5 to Ag 5. So if it sounds repetitive, that's why. Okay, so the first application we have is for ordinance number 2025-03. It is a rezoning. The request is from Agriculture 7.5 to Agriculture 5. This property is owned by Mr. Alan Pippins. It is located on Mud Lake, about one mile south of 125. It is a 10.01 acre parcel. Again, it's Agriculture 7.5 with a land use of Agriculture B. The parcel is currently in compliance with all current zoning standards. But the applicant's intent for the time being is to build a garage that has an apartment inside for him and his family to reside in for the time being. And then they want to build a traditional site-built home in the future on the same property. We would consider that two dwellings. And so with it only being 10 acres and zoned Ag 7.5, it would not allow for two dwellings. So that is his intention. You'll see most everything immediately touching the parcel has the same Ag 7.5 zoning and Ag B land use. There are some pockets across the street that are RCMH-1 with very low-density residential. But for the most part, everything touching the parcel is similar to what it is now. The applicant's request to rezone from Ag 7.5 to Ag 5 would result in similar uses, or the same uses, similar lot requirements with a minimal change in density. And again, the parcel is currently in compliance with standards now. Staff recommends approval, and LPA recommends approval as well.
Is there access to both lots?
It's going to stay one lot. It's not going to be separated into two lots. It's going to stay one lot.
If you're separating it into two lots, that doesn't mean a year from now...
They could apply to subdivide it later on, but that would trigger other issues.
Yeah, they could apply to do that later on, but that's not anything that's been discussed as of now. It says intention to use the garage in the future for private uses. But that would be a different process down the road if he chose to do that. There would still be a process necessary.
Is the homeowner looking at one set to take for both? Or is he going to... If he builds a house?
So yeah, if he built a house, the septic approval we have now is for the garage apartment.
For the size.
For the size of the garage apartment. And then it would be up to him at that point to get with environmental help to see if, you know, he could expand the current one or if he needed a second one.
Yeah, okay. In order to build, would he have to split it? He wouldn't have to split it, would he?
No.
This is getting zoned from 7.5 to 5 now.
And the intention as of right this moment is not to split the parcel. It's for it to be, to continue to be one parcel.
Okay. Any other questions from the board? Any questions for anyone in the public? Any comments on this item? If not, okay, we'll move to the next item.
All right. So the next parcel we have, or the next application we have is for ordinance number 2025-04, a rezoning. And the request is from Agriculture 7.5 to Agriculture 5. This parcel is located off of Fred Perry Road. It's owned by Ms. Cynthia Rollerson. So it is currently 6.45 acres with a land use of Ag B and a zoning of Ag 7.5. So right now, this parcel is currently considered non-conforming due to its creation before current standards. The proposed rezoning would bring the parcel into compliance with current standards while still allowing them the flexibility to give a family lot in the future. So it would be their intention to deed an acre to an immediate family member for a family lot. And at that point, it would still leave them just over five acres and would leave them with a conforming lot. You'll see everything around this parcel has the agriculture zone B land use and the Ag 7.5 zoning. See a lot of red there on those. And again, it would result in the same uses, similar lot requirements with a minimal change in density. The proposed zoning would bring the parcel into compliance, again, while still allowing the flexibility for a family lot. Staff recommends approval, and LPA recommended approval as well.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments on this item from anyone in the public? All right, move forward.
All right, and the last of our very repetitive applications. So this is for application, or for ordinance number 2025-08, a rezoning with the request of Agriculture 7.5 to Agriculture 5. This parcel is owned by Brian Patterson. It is also located on Mud Lake Road, but it is down more towards the 229 side instead of the 125 side. It is currently five acres with a land use of Ag B and a zoning of Ag 7.5. This parcel was created in 2007. It's currently vacant and would be considered non-conforming. This parcel was created by the family splitting some land, and they did not go through any process when they did that. So it left us with a non-conforming lot. The proposed rezoning would bring the parcel into compliance with current standards and allow them to build one site-built home.
Speak louder.
The louder you talk, the louder it makes. Apparently. Okay, so you'll see there are very similar uses around the property, mostly Ag 7.5 and Ag B. There is a little bit of RCMH-2.5 and very low-density residential up at Mud Lake. On the last picture there, you'll see there is just the FEMA flood zone touches just the corner of this parcel. So anytime the flood zone touches the parcel, we like to show that. So the applicant's request would again result in the same uses, similar lot requirements, and minimal change in density, and would bring the parcel into compliance and allow them to build one site-built home or place one mobile home. Staff recommends approval, and LPA recommended approval as well.
Chairman, I'd like to declare a conflict of interest on this.
Needs.
I've already talked to...
I do have one question for this parcel. Just looking at it, one, I have no objections to the particular land use and zoning. However, it doesn't appear that there's any actual access to this property and so forth. So how's that being addressed?
They have addressed that already, the property owners have. They have an easement agreement now with the property in between them and Mud Lake.
Thank you. The Miller property?
Um...
I'm assuming that's who they got.
There's Miller, there's Cynthia Johns.
The last one. The property owners that you guys have the easement agreement with now, what is their name, their last name? Do you have... Miller or Johns?
Miller or Johns.
John, is it Johns?
Johns.
So the access will come through that parcel.
Is it a deed of easement?
It is, it is. They have a recorded easement agreement now.
Okay. I have no objections.
Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from anyone in the public on this item? Thank you, ma'am.
All right, so we're going to change it up a little bit for this last one here. So this application is one that we do not see very often. It's an application for subdivision replat. So this parcel is located, or this property is located within the Kyler Field subdivision. So back in the early 90s, they platted the Kyler Field subdivision. And at that time, there were two blocks left whole in the subdivision. And there was just simply a note on those two blocks that said, "Will be reserved for future use to develop lots of one acre or more." And that was it. There was not any other direction other than an empty block with that notation. So the property owners at this time wish to subdivide that block of Kyler Field. They have 11.60 acres. It has a current land use of very low-density residential and a current zoning of residential conventional 1. So there would not be any change to the land use or zoning. That would stay the same. And the intention is to subdivide this block into six residential lots that all contain one acre or more. They are really closer to the two-acre mark, but just under two acres. So you'll see here, the land use and zoning, it's the same for the entire subdivision. And there's not a request to change that at all. So you'll see on one side is a snapshot from that actual plot, actual plat from '92. And it is a little blurry when I zoomed it up, but it does say Block 5 will be reserved for future use to develop of one acre or more, to develop lots of one acre or more. And then beside that, you see how those lots would lay out. So if you are looking at the property appraiser's website or if you are looking at the other maps that we have here, you will see that the property owners have already separated those tracks for taxing purposes. The property owner had started this process and there, a while back, and there was a miscommunication about the process. And so now we are back on course to remedy that.
Can you just confirm real quick?
Yes.
Can you go back to that slide?
Yes.
That is, that one I'm showing, there's two owned at the bottom. That one's on the...
Yeah, so it is actually, so it is actually this entire, this is the block here. So these six parcels that you see, it's all six of those parcels. So those six parcels are the same parcels that you see here. It did look like this. It has already been split for taxing purposes. So when you look at any property appraiser map, it shows them already separated. So we're not just talking about the highlighted piece. We're talking about all six of these here.
So help me understand, if I may. There's only two parcels here that's under Raimi Ratliff, right? There's another, understand, touchstone?
Yes.
That's the one on the far left. Then as you go up, is it David DePeters, a Richard Graham?
Yes.
As well as another Richard?
Some of them have already been sold. And that's part of the reason, that's how we got here and realized that... Correction needed to make. That this process was not finished properly.
So this is how it was flagged.
Sir?
So this is how it was flagged.
Yes, yes, yes. So all of the other property owners have signed agent authorizations giving the original property owner permission to go through this process on their behalf.
So in short, this has already been done. You just need us to make it okay?
It has.
Give it issue permits?
It has been done for taxing purposes, but that does not mean that we recognize them as notable lots, so...
In order for those lots that have already been separated out, people have purchased those in order to be able to build homes on those properties, this has to be done. And from what I see is those lots' sizes are as big or bigger than many of the others around.
They are, they are.
So it's consistent with the entire...
Absolutely, it is consistent, it is. So the lot sizes, like I said, they're all, they're all just under two acres. Just under two acres.
Which is bigger than most of the lots in there.
It is, it is. So again, that's the, what the block originally looked like. And then on the other side, you'll see the end result there. So again, it was on the original plat. The intention was for it to be subdivided in the future. So that's why we're here.
So the three at the top will be coming off of Cub Court, and the three at the bottom will be coming off of North Runway Circle?
Yes, so they'll come off of, yes, three will have access from Runway, and then the other three will have access from Cub Court.
Cub Court. Any other questions or comments from the board? Any questions or comments from anyone in the public?
And just for, just for a note, we have already been in conversations with the owner of the other block that is still intact. And it is their intent to go through a similar process in the future, probably the very near future. But they, we've had several conversations that they understand the process thoroughly.
They try to do it before they sell lots.
Yes, yes. We've had, we've had many conversations, so...
There's a lot of people selling lots that are unusable. They need to learn to do the process.
Yes, because in those, on the ones we just approved, there's access through Cub Court. There is not an access road along that side for them to be able to divide it the same way.
So staff did recommend approval, and LPA recommended approval as well. So if you have any other questions for me?
No, ma'am. I think we're good, thank you.
All right.
We're moving to our last item on the public hearing, which is item number five, which is ordinance 2025-05, is additional local option fuel tax.
Yes, sir, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start the conversations and then turn that over to you all if that's agreeable.
Yes, ma'am.
So we have been working through some discussions over the last few months as a board about an additional local option fuel tax. This is a tax that Baker County does not currently collect, but it is one that is allowable. So we have gone through, again, workshops and scenarios over how we could possibly use these funds. I just honestly want to open it up for dialogue from you all for, from some direction. The county attorney, Mr. Commando, has prepared ordinance 2025-05, which would allow the board to begin collection of that, obviously with the passing at first and second hearings. This is not for a final vote tonight. This is just first hearing and for discussion tonight. So again, the ordinance is presented to you all. I do have copies of some of the previous documentation, if you need it while we're here, that we've talked about with revenues and what some of our timelines are and things like that. I'd be happy to answer any questions specific to those. But again, Mr. Chairman, just opening it up for communication. And again, I know we have several that have submitted speaker cards on this item as well. I don't know if there's anyone else in the public that wishes to speak, but we do have a few here that have been waiting to do so.
Thank you, Ms.... I'll go ahead and let Commissioner Bennett speak, and then I'll get the public comments.
Well, we've already gone, had a couple workshops on this already. Discuss what it'd be. The intent of this is to try to do improved maintenance overall. We're looking at focused more on better, a better approach to dealing with drainage issues and preparing and drainage easements and cleanouts. We're talking about additional efforts for mowing and maintaining as well as maintaining the rights of way. And quite frankly, as well as addressing the pay rate that we currently pay for our public works department. Because at the end of the day, if we don't remain competitive, we're going to continue to lose staff. And that has been a challenge in the past with maintaining staff today. And so this overall approach is to try to provide the minimal revenue for it. This gas tax is a dedicated revenue source that can only be used for transportation and road improvements. It cannot be used for any other type of applications. It cannot go to general revenues. It cannot go to fire rescue. It cannot go to parks and recreations. It cannot go for any other services except for transportation, anything associated with transportation. And so that's why I'm a strong proponent for it, because that's what it is dedicated for, is simply straightforward transportation. We have, over the years, we've continued to decrease the size of the road department. We've continued to decrease the number of people that we have there. And we simply do not have the staff to continue to maintain to the degree that we need to. It's not just about the, it's about costs have gone up. If you recall here, just a few months ago, we upgraded or renewed our lease on five of our six motor graders, and the cost went from about $25,000 a year to almost $50,000 a year per motor grader. The revenue was increased. Those costs have doubled. And that's just one example of what we're experiencing. And so this is not an attempt to, this is simply an attempt to make sure we continue to be able to maintain our infrastructure and our roads to the degree that we can. Keep in mind, the only ones paying this tax are the ones that's driving. So those that don't drive, don't pay it. It is, the tax is simply for those that are driving. And additionally, if you think about it, we've got several, a number of large stations right off the interstate system. And every time somebody gets off the interstate and buys gas, they're helping to pay for our roads. So it is a cost associated with that. And this is only for motor fuel taxes, not for diesel fuel. So again, I've been, I affirmatively believe this is the appropriate way to fill in transportation. And everything I'd said previously at the workshop still stands.
Commissioner, just understand that the way the statute's written, you can't use this tax for routine maintenance of roads. I mean, it's listed in the statute. You can use it for capital improvements. So if you're repaving a road that increases capacity or things like that, that's what this tax can be used for.
Well, we certainly have ample needs to resurface roadways. So that is not, that is not an issue to be able to do that.
I just want to make sure it's presented the right way as far as what you're approving.
Can we pave existing dirt roads?
Absolutely. So anything that increases capacity on the road or repaving roads or... But the statute just says...
Not routine maintenance.
It says, "The expenditures for this purpose of this paragraph shall not include routine maintenance of roads."
So what Mr. Commando and I actually talked about is if you're currently funding capital purchase with the existing fuel tax, you will reallocate this new tax to those and free up your local option fuel tax to do exactly what you guys were asking to do. So it's just an allocation once the funds get in here. Yes, sir, and what those purchases go to.
Any other comments for any of the board members, staff? Okay, I got a couple of speaker cards. I'm thinking that they came to me, Mr. Worthington?
Always first.
Could I ask a question first?
Sure.
What is the proposed tax rate? Has that been discussed?
Five cents.
We have a dedicated rate, Mr. Bennett?
It's a five cent local option gas tax, five cents per gallon.
Five cents per gallon, local option tax.
Yes, sir.
To be used only for?
Roads.
Roads, improvements. It can't be used for maintenance. Like when they come around every couple of months and put some patch on it, patches on it, patches on it, patches on it, patches on it. They can't do that with that money.
This money is made for improving the roads.
Okay. I would like to say that I know that there are many people that are going to be opposed to a tax, and I agree with that. We should never give the government opportunity to pick or pocket. That's just the way it is. Most of this tax is going to come from the residents of this county. And they'll let you know next time around, you know what I'm talking about, how happy they are with that. But I would like to say that I can't believe that you're not already imposing this tax. Uh, it's, it's typically not a very big amount that you're allowed to charge and, but in this day and age, that's going to be a big hit in the pocket of a lot of people. Some people unfortunately drive to Jacksonville and back every day, or they drive to Lake City and back every day, or they drive to Gainesville back. There's a lot of people that have to travel for their work, and that's going to be a big hit in their pocket to pay this tax. I'm retired. It's not going to be that big of an impact on me. And I'm glad that Mr. Bennett pointed out that, yeah, passers through. We have some very fine, large gas stations next to the interstate, and they do bring in a lot of business. People who don't want to have to stop in the big city as they're going through. I'm never in favor, I think I already said this, I'm never in favor of giving the government opportunity to pick your pocket, but I can't believe this tax isn't already in place. I have no illusions that it's going to impact the road that I live on. I've been living there for over thirty years, and for over thirty years, it's just been a patch on a patch on a patch on a patch. It's not like the people who live on dirt roads. You send your grader out and I don't know what kind of schedule they're on, but they come through and they get a brand-new road every time that road needs to be recut, and my road's not like that. I encourage you to be very cautious about how you proceed. It's never a good idea to tell the people that, well, we're just going to pick your pocket and it don't matter. I know you don't personally feel that way, but understand that these people out here, and most of you are going to be paying that tax because you buy your gas here too. And that's all I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Weeks?
I'm George Weeks. I assume I tell where. Seven seven six nine four circle, Glen St. Mary, Florida. I'm not sure if I'm against it or not, but I have some comments about, uh, the gas tax. Uh, one of them is, how do you plan to tax EVs? Uh, they weigh approximately thirty percent more than the average gas-powered vehicle, which means they cost significantly more wear and tear on the roads. I'm not sure why I should pay to, for the roads and the EVs are going to use them. And I would suggest maybe either charge them on a license tag so much a month, or I understand the state had a proposal that they were going to charge two hundred dollars extra for a license tag for an EV that would go to the roads, but that's something that needs to be addressed because apparently the federal government's really pushing them. But, uh, wear and tear on roads is significant. You can see it all over this county. The other one is, and this is a touchy subject for you, I'm sure, but why are you still accepting dirt roads? This discussion was going on when I moved here in nineteen seventy-eight. One of my friends from Clay High, who was a county commissioner for a number of years in Clay County, said until they said, "No more dirt roads," things really didn't start to improve in Clay County. And while raising salaries for road department employees is, has a lot of merit, and I agree with, it would seem that increased gas taxes should go to paved roads, the roads, because then it reduces the maintenance that you have to have more employees, more graders, and everything else take care of dirt roads. And, um, the last one, again, now another one is, yes, the roads are deteriorating with increased traffic, but impact fees could help mitigate this situation. Nassau, Clay, St. Johns all have impact fees to help with the costs that comes with growth. Population growth increases demand for county services, police, fire, rescue, schools, recreation, roads. I was told that Legacy Elementary could not have been built without impact fees in the schools because they couldn't have met state matching requirements. You're using county tax, uh, surrounding counties and their tax rates to help justify this, yet you refuse impact fees which can help mitigate things going on as far as paying for firemen, police, and roads and everything else. And lastly, how do I trust my local government with my tax dollars when you haven't had a state-mandated audit in over two, almost three years? It would seem there's only two possibilities, and that is either incompetence or fraud. I'm on the hospital authority. We have to have an audit every year and have to have it done. And it seems to me maybe you need to require a state forensic audit of the books in this county to reestablish the trust of the citizens of Baker County. Thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Weeks.
Yes, sir.
George Weeks, thank you for your time, for your efforts. I do want to just, uh, touch base on a couple of things. The whole issue of EVs, that is a huge issue statewide and nationally on how to do that, and it's been a struggle for even the state agencies to try to figure out how to do that because while there's a big push to go EVs, they're not buying fuel, and that's the only way that, that transportation is funded. So your, your points are right on target. It's not something new, and it's, it's being, it's a big issue at all levels of government right now to try to solve that one. Uh, so, so you're, you're right on ta- on track. With respect to dirt roads, I want to make sure that, that we're clear as well. We have not been accepting any new dirt roads since I've been on the board. What we did do is adopt some policies and processes that would allow for, for some improved non-paved roads to be built in certain subdivisions. However, they must have an HOA and they are fully responsible for those roads and not the county. So while there has been a couple of subdivisions approved, those were improved roads, but they're not paved. They are not a county responsibility whatsoever to maintain those. Uh, and, and so we've been very cognizant about that to make sure we don't take on any more dirt roads because you're, you're right on point with that as well. I'm going to jump to the last one about the audit. Hang around a little bit. There's going to be more conversations about that because I absolutely agree and I'm very much concerned with the audit side and the failure to not have an audit done uh, in a timely manner as well as following up with the state forensic audit. So I appreciate your comments.
Any other questions or comments from any board?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead.
Just so everyone here knows, um, because there's talk about driving to and from different places and what the fuel taxes are. Nassau County, Bradford County, Putnam County, Duval County all charge this tax. Oddly enough, St. John's County does not. But just what's around us, that's how they handle this tax.
Well, St. John's has impact fee.
Oh, they definitely have impact fees.
You can build a house with an impact fee.
Some of those communities, I think it's twenty-
I thought it was a lot higher than that.
No. Clay County right now, I think it's eighteen thousand. St. John's County is just under thirty thousand.
Yep. Thirty thousand dollars for an impact fee.
And I am in favor of moving forward, seeing what we can do to reconstitute impact fees.
Is, is there no tax right now? I, I know you said on the electric vehicles. Is there no tax being collected whatsoever on that?
Not that I'm aware of.
I seen one just, uh, in my research where there was a tax whenever they buy the tag, but I wasn't sure on that. I need to verify that.
They're trying to do it tag-wise, and they're also trying to do it on the station, the charging stations. They're looking at trying to somehow recruit local option taxes on the recharging stations in each county.
Well, we pay taxes on utilities. I just wonder-
And that's what they're looking at, transportation. But there's many options being thrown out there, but nothing stuck yet, so. But I agree with Mr. Weeks on that.
Thank you.
So that's the conversation they're having at state level too, about EVs. At federal level, I don't know what kind of conversations they're having over there.
There's been a lot of discussions over the years about changing from gas tags to vehicle miles traveled, but then that gets into a whole issue of how do you track the vehicle miles that was traveled? And now it's an issue and invasion of privacy because you're tracking every mile I go and where I go to get that mileage. So there's been a lot of bigger pictures to try to figure out how to solve this because, you know, when we push EVs, we put, push more fuel-efficient vehicles with great gas mileage. Well, the fact is, is those bigger vehicles or those, those cars, they still require space on the road. They still require impacts. They still require all the, the challenge on the road, but with less revenue being generated by them. So that's a, that's a huge issue.
They require more use of a fire department.
Yes, yep. Especially now.
Any other comments before we leave the public hearing?
Well, the one thing I would, let's make sure that we also discuss and understand is there is a ratio, if this moves forward, there's a ratio of how the funding would be split. It was, it's based on the actual expenditures for road improvements that's done between, by Baker County.
Not on this one, so that's on the local option. This one can be one hundred percent with the county.
Thank you.
Yes.
Any other comments? Any other comments from anyone in the public? Close our public hearing. We're going back into our regular scheduled meeting. And I think we're on item number, Mr. John, was y'all finished? I know I kind of, I run, they done left.
They're gone. They're done.
I kind of pushed them along, but they just ran out of here.
Yes, yes.
Okay, we're on item number nine, which is a resolution for the interlocal agreement, local option gas tax.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So this is, is the current, um, local option that we collect currently now. What we were just previously discussing, discussing, excuse me, is referred to at the state level as the additional local option. That additional local option can remain one hundred percent at the county. But what we're currently collecting, uh, for the local option, uh, does have a distribution rate, and we have done that, um, for the last twenty-plus years via a interlocal agreement with the town of Glen St. Mary and the city of McLennie. Um, basically, current rates are, uh, the county is at eighty-six percent, thirteen percent for the city, and one percent for the town. Um, the requirements, I've done a lot of research on this over the last few months. The requirements, um, to set these rates, um, you take the, the last five years, uh, the actual cost for transportation countywide, um, and we needed the actual cost for the county, for the town, and for the city. And, um, basically that gives you your percentages. So I've actually attached all of that just so that everyone was aware of the calculations that we went through. And actually, there's an, an attachment to the very last page of, um, the interlocal agreement before you get into the backup there. Um, so there's a great deal of money that has been spent in Baker County over the last five years. Uh, countywide, just shy of twenty-one million dollars has been spent in local real money between the county, the city, and the town. Um, of that, um, Baker County, um, is at just shy of eighteen million. The city of McLennie, um, two-point-seven million, and the town of Glen, a hundred and seventy-five thousand. So believe it or not, through all of these calculations, those rates, um, should stay exactly the way they are. Um, we have all grown, um, and spent more money, um, over the last, um, twenty years, but those rates actually came out to where Baker County, um, is still at an eighty-six percent, um, rate. The city of McLennie, thirteen, and the town of Glen is just under one percent, but it does require a whole number there. Um, so this interlocal agreement has been prepared to, to reflect that, just simply that it's been updated and dates. Um, and the term is actually for five years. Again, we're, we're at the same rates, um, that we have been for that period of time, and that the documentation proves that that's where we need to be. Um, I have shared this with the city of McLennie already and the town of Glen. Um, we had one comment back from the town of Glen that just a signature line needed to be changed, um, but otherwise they were satisfied and actually pleasantly surprised, um, that the rates did not need to change. Um, I will like to point out, um, that one item does need to be included, that it's not currently included. So when we originally talked to FDR about our additional local option, um, an interlocal agreement was required. However, I have gotten clarification that we can add that as part of one interlocal agreement. It does not require a second interlocal agreement to be able to do that. So, um, at the board's direction, I will add language that the additional local option will remain at the county one hundred percent and include that in this interlocal agreement and rescind that out to everyone for final approval. Uh, but that is the only, um, the only change that we would, uh, need to make unless there's some comments tonight. Uh, but again, that is, that is kind of where we stand with the interlocal agreement as it's presented.
Ms. Sarah, when we have to have this?
Um, it needs to be submitted back, um, to FDR by the end of June, um, and we are on schedule to meet that timeline with both the city and the town, and I've already sent a draft of this to FDR. Um, they've reviewed it. They don't have any questions or concerns with it. So, um, if it is, um, scheduled for formal approval at the April fifteenth meeting, the city of McLennie has plans to adopt that at their, uh, meeting in May, and I believe the county of Glen as well.
Make sure that we had time to get it to them before we're to sign it.
Yes, sir. We do. Yes, sir. We do.
Yes. Question. Sarah, um, the first, the original local option gas tax, or, excuse me, the first interlocal agreement-
Yes, sir.
-was in place for how many years?
Twenty years.
And how long is this one going to be in place?
Five.
Why only five?
Um, as the, um, county grows, we know we've got a lot of, um, development that's potential throughout the years. We can make that as long as we needed to be, um, but I felt that a five-year, um, span of time was probably, um, a good allocation to, to stop and look at it again. The rates may stay the same. Again, it's really not, um, not anything overly complicated to calculate the rate, so I thought, you know, five years was sufficient. But however, we can adjust that to any length of time.
I don't have a problem with the five years. I just didn't know if there was, what, I didn't know what the foundation or reason was, was why it went from a twenty-one, twenty-year down to only a five-year. Uh, but, but again, you, you got to go through this effort and make sure it doesn't get missed again in five years.
Yes, sir.
I would, and Rich, I don't know that if we can do this, but can we allow this to continue beyond the five years unless we rescind or change?
I don't believe so. DOR requires that the, the interlocal agreement be effective with an active date. If not, they set the allocations. Um, so from what I have read, you, you need to make sure this interlocal agreement stays in effect.
So what I would say is just have a longer timeframe, and then you can come back and amend it at any point through that timeframe.
Yeah, I think we ought to go to ten years.
Certainly.
I mean, we haven't changed in twenty years.
Right.
I don't think ten years, but it can be amended or changed anytime in that, in that period.
I don't see a massive change in funding sources that's going to create that, that level of massive investments.
I would move it to ten years. I think would be more.
Certainly can do so.
Get the boards okay with it.
I'm good with that.
Two of us are good with it.
Yeah, yeah.
Three.
Three.
Yes, sir. We will incorporate those changes and, and distribute it to the other entities as well.
Okay.
Do we need a-
No, sir. This was just for discussion tonight.
Information and that.
Yep. Jim, I've got my directions. It were good.
Okay, we're moving into our next item for discussion is a special assessment for the fire increase.
Yes, sir. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to start this discussion, and I would imagine, um, you all will have some, some comments about this as well. Um, this is another one we have talked about, um, over the last few years. Um, we, um, have looked at, um, potentially re, uh, authorizing the methodology calculations for the special assessment, um, but currently have no, um, immediate plan to do so in the current budget. However, this did come up in conversation, um, as, as the board, um, talked about a couple of meetings ago of if we don't start now, you know, there's, there's obviously a time process to have this done, and then there's a time, um, in which it has to be effective throughout the year. So, um, if not now, if we started this process now, you're still looking at, um, revenue being collected, um, a year at least from now before we see that. So, um, we did reach out to the firm that we, um, had a contract with prior, um, that's Stand Tech. Part of DOR's requirements also stipulate that you have to be able to legally defend your methodology. So in addition to Stand Tech, there is a, a law firm that specializes in this that, which we've used before, which is Bryant Miller Olive. And you really have to have both of those in partnership to make sure that you're getting solid evidence to be able to support the, the need for, um, the methodology and the need for the increase. Um, so we did reach out to both of those companies, um, and to move forward with, with the study. We don't know what that study may say at this point. They may come back and say, "You need a five-dollar increase over the next five years," or "You need no increase." You need, we, we don't know what that looks like. This study would tell us that. Um, but at this point, all we have gotten are proposals on what that study would look like, uh, from Stand Tech. Um, their total is forty-four thousand, two-hundred-and-sixty dollars, and the accompanying, um, legal, um, contract that we would need to go with that from Bryant Miller Olive is, um, on the high end, he said, depending upon, um, his travel time, um, it could be, um, a few thousand dollars lower, but I, I've, I've budgeted for his higher rate of seventeen thousand, five hundred. Um, the quote that we got was from fourteen thousand to seventeen-five, depending on how many meetings and things like that he had to come for. Um, so the total for the study for both of those companies would be sixty-one thousand, seven-hundred-and-sixty dollars. Again, those proposals have been, um, included. The proposal from Stand Tech and then, um, just the information from Bryant Miller Olive was included. Um, but again, just looking at board direction, I know, um, we've been talking, obviously, tonight about increase in revenues, and this is another avenue for us to look at. Um, again, just looking for direction from the board on, um, on if this is something, there's any interest in, in moving forward with.
And that's only for the special assessment?
Correct.
Correct. Yes, sir.
So impact fee, fees would be?
So impact fees would be an additional survey?
Yes, sir, it would be an additional methodology. They, Stand Tech stipulated that they, this is a very busy time of year for them, and they did not feel comfortable for providing a proposal to perform an impact fee methodology, simply because they felt it could be up to a year before they got to, to be able to have that, the time in their schedule to allow for that, and they felt that their proposal might be invalid because of that length of time. I definitely, I told them to please continue to work on that for us, and when they got to a point in their schedule that they felt they could provide a proposal for you all to please do so, that we were interested in that. But yes, sir, this, this amount is specifically for fire assessment methodology study.
Does the board, do we have the number that we had to, do we pull money out of general revenue this year to help fire?
Yes, sir, yes, we did. We had to balance the budget. About 200,000.
We clearly had to supplement the, the calls for fire rescue out of general revenues. The, the, the revenues were clearly.
It was about 200,000. I'll have to pull the actual number for you. But yes, sir, we did supplement that.
Well, you had to, because there were certain grants that were only five-year grants, and when those grants expired, you had to.
Right. For paper.
And then for the impact fees, and please know, I'm not advocating any position, if this board wanted to move forward that, there are other firms that do that. It's not limited to BMO and Stand Tech.
That was something I was going to bring up, you know, Stand Tech, there has to be other companies that do that, and if we went down that avenue.
You could put out an RFQ to seek proposals.
You know, if we spent $61,000 just for the fire assessment, if there was a way to look at impact fees in general, and, and, you know, it would create more revenue, more general revenue there that we could allocate to fire if needed, wouldn't that be part of that evaluation as far as what an impact fee would consist of?
So think of your impact fees are your capital costs that go into increasing in your rooftops for the most part. So it affects roads, libraries, sheriff's office, fire rescue, county administration, things like that. And then your, your assessments are, I tried to describe those, those are like a user fee, so that's for the continuing ongoing fee of supporting those types of costs.
The, the special assessments touch every lot versus impact fees are only those new residences that are trying to be constructed, and so. Her structure, but there's also vacant lots also have an impact fee too. Excuse me.
An assessment.
An assessment. Yes, I'm 99% sure, go back and double check. I'm quite sure that there is a.
Not if there's no structure and no utilities on it.
So, so we, we can talk more about this. It depends when, when the consultant gives you a report, they're going to give you, it's almost like squeezing a balloon, that if you want to take off one area, you bring in another, and last time, that's when our property owners came in and were very upset because even Stand Tech said at the time that the number of brush fires on vacant land was not really one that you could recover the cost for. So I, there's some way to do that. Many governments decide to opt out of that, but that's why you have the public hearing process, is you'll evaluate kind of what the county's needs are, again, presuming you go down that road.
The special assessment, it impacts whether, I, I may be incorrect if I am, that it did impact vacant lots as well, because there was fires associated, there's sometimes brush fires, so I know we went through lengthy, a number of conversations about that. We may ended up not doing that, but I do recall.
We had a lot of talk about that, yes, sir.
We did have a lot of conversations. But at the end of the day, the special assessment hits a lot of, of, a tremendous number of folks that receive the services because of, of having the structures and so forth, where impact fees is isolated to those that are trying to build. And it's, and understand, impact fees are not simply for new residences, it's local residences that are trying to build, that if you've got a, a child that wants to put in a mobile home on family property in a family lot provisions, they pay that same provision, same things as well there. So there's a different approach with what the impact fees are for. So I think if we were going to try to address the shortfall in the fire rescue department, it should be through the special assessment, not through impact. That's, that's just my personal opinion on that. The impact fee should be able to address, really go towards the overall bigger picture infrastructure and causes, the cause of the impacts of the additional residents, but the actual cost to maintain and keep up fire, emergency rescue, I think those are more appropriately addressed through special assessments.
I want to remember, in addition to anything we do, the school has their own impact fees.
Yes. The special assessment, the, the amount of calls, the amount of activity for our fire and rescue is only going to increase. The expense for our fire and rescue is only going to increase. The staffing requirements, the training requirements, everything for our fire and rescue, the costs are only going to increase. So we can take it out of the general budget, or we can pass a special assessment. And I, I think special assessment helps cover our expenses and keeps from drawing it out of general funds.
The only question I have is if we do this $61,000, maybe a different number if we do an RFQ and get another company. Say we do $60,000, just, I won't explain it to the board, it doesn't mean that whenever the report comes back that we can raise assessments. It might come back that we can't raise assessments, that we've already maxed out.
That's possible.
And we was, I know with the last one that we had done, we was real close, and I'm not so sure how much has changed since the last time we done assessments in the county.
I'll say, if, the last time we did this, just remember, was pre-COVID. I think costs of everything have just gone up because of that, so.
I just don't want y'all to be surprised when they come back and say there's no assessment you can charge.
That's possible.
And that is a highlight, I mean, it's not, you cancel for 50/50 either way, you just don't know. I'd be disappointed, but I wouldn't be surprised.
And, and keep in mind, we can do the assessment to make a, it gives us the information to decide whether we want to proceed with it or not. It may be, because we worked through that, because look, we took a lot of heat the last time when we did this, because we ended up coming back and making a revision to it, if I recall correctly, because of the issue of barns and secondary structures and how we'd originally proposed the fees on those, we've come back and made revisions to that to reduce those costs on those secondary structures, so it wasn't as much as originally planned and things like that, to try to get it back to something that we could, that we could handle and tolerate and that the public could, could absorb, because there was a lot of, a lot of concerns from the public whenever we did it the last time. So keep in mind, the study will provide information, but I want to be clear that just because the study is done doesn't necessarily lock us into saying we shall do it. It means that we have information to make better informed decisions on. But we are risking, we are, we would be making a spend sure of $60,000.
Mr. Chairman, I, I view that a little bit different when you do the assessment. Taxes are taxes, it doesn't matter where it come from, I don't care if you have to take it out, it's, it's possible to pay this, it's still the people paying that money. So, you know, I have a different view on that. I think right now, people are stretched, and even a little bit of increase hurts it. And I think you need to, we need to really study on that to make sure that's the avenue we want to go.
Can I expand on your thought? So I think we all know, taxes are paid for whether or not you use the service. I mean, you go to a store, you pay a sales tax, doesn't matter that whatever that tax money goes to use. The concept of a special assessment is it's more like a user fee. You're paying for it because you have a possibility of using whatever the service is. Now oftentimes, when local governments look at imposing or increasing a special assessment, because it decreases, in theory, what you're bringing in in taxes from your general revenue, that's when you look at lowering millage to do this. This is never meant to be like a money grab. The idea is supposed to be that you're apportioning the, the collection of the money from the people that use the service.
When, when was the last one? I'm sorry, I missed that.
Six years ago?
Six years. Six years ago? 2019?
Around there, yes, sir.
Yes, sir, we started it before then, but it was completed in 2019.
It was completed in 2019? A lot's changed since 2019.
Yeah, I mean, we, usually, Chief Blanton knows this stuff better than I do. I feel like back then, fire truck cost something, what I thought was crazy back then, like 200,000, and sitting in a separate commission meeting this morning, they paid 650,000 for a truck. It's just unbelievable. Like we hear inflation goes up, but I mean, that's 300% increase.
Just our, our appropriation. So a few years ago, we were fortunate to get a fire pumper tanker truck for $650,000. We submitted that same appropriation for the same piece of equipment in this current cycle for $900,000 to the state. That just shows you in, in what, two years' time, how much that equipment has changed in two years.
But the people are feeling the same thing.
Yes, sir.
They go out and buy a car, $60,000, two years ago, it's $90,000 now.
Buy groceries.
Buy groceries, it was $100 last week, it's 200 this week.
Well, the dilemma y'all are faced with is nobody's salaries have gone up that much.
Nobody's salary is compensated.
Yes.
We're not here to make a decision tonight, this information only, great information.
Well, I think you need to give Ms. Little some direction.
We need a, a week, maybe in the next meeting, we can come back and we can discuss this again. I'm not going to give any direction tonight, me personally.
That's fine.
So if you're looking for a direction from me, you're not going to get it. If any of the, one of the other commissioners want to, to give directions, they're welcome too.
It was just you want her to, to take the next step with the group, but if you don't, you can wait on that.
Me personally, I want, I'm not ready to move forward with, I need some more.
I imagine y'all are going to get some emails and calls.
I already got them, so.
I have a procurement question.
Yes, sir.
Sarah, what is our, what is the board's policy, county administration's policy on procurement purchases and how we go out? Because I'm concerned that here we are looking at going out for this one proposal, spending $61,000, and we haven't done any type of procurement besides reach out to one particular vendor, and, and quite frankly, I'm not sure we have justification for a single source or sole source justification for it. So I, I'm trying to understand, we didn't get quotes, we didn't get multiple proposals, so from a procurement standpoint, what is our guidelines? What guidelines do, does the county follow for services like this?
Yes, sir. So anything over $50,000 requires formal processes for solicitation, so bids, RFPs, RFQs. But Rich, if I'm not mistaken, this was really just for budgeting purposes, so we know, we need to know how much it is. But if I remember, we, we did not go out for a process, or, and I apologize, I really wasn't involved in the initial hiring of Stand Tech back then. I, if I'm not mistaken, I thought we went through a process where they were a sole source or were they through an RFP process?
Neither. So what happens is, because technically what happens is you're hiring the law firm, you're hiring BMO, and then Stand Tech is a consultant that they hire. So under the CCNA, legal services is exempted from that provision.
Yeah, that's it.
So that's why you didn't go out to bid last time.
But if that's the case, then we've been doing a contract, a $61,000 contract with the law firm.
We, we did.
Yes.
And so, so we don't, we're not required to follow a CCNA, but with all due respect.
You can.
Well, I'm just concerned that we're going directly to a single law firm, single source, essentially, without justification for doing that. And I know typically lawyers don't put in proposals and things like that, but again, I'm just trying to understand, what is our procurement guidelines for that? Because we start spending 15, $60,000, it should be competitive. I mean, we go through issues with septic tanks at 10,000, 11,000, and have heartburn because we only have a single bid, and we're about to do a 60,000 one with, without getting any competition.
Yeah, I mean, it's the pleasure of the board, we can.
Six years ago, we paid 40,000, so considering what the price increases have been, it's not significantly off. I'll tell you that I have other clients that are paying a lot more than this.
Well, when we, we actually talked about this two budget cycles ago, and, and the proposal that we got back then was 60,000, so we're, and that was, like I said, that was two budget cycles, and so we're at a $1,760 increase from two years ago.
Yeah, the number didn't bother me because we've already, I mean, two years ago, we got the same, same, same thing.
Yes, sir.
It bothers me because I don't want to pay it, but if we want to go down this path, I think we need to make a, a good decision, that's what we want to do.
Yes, sir.
Because this could be $61,000 of taxpayers' money we spend, and we're not going to get a dime for it back.
Yes, understood.
So, and, and that's not a decision I want to make.
Right.
Today.
We're, we're here to serve the pleasure of you all.
But I'm just one board member, there's four other of them. So what's y'all, 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 what y'all want to do? I gave you my two cents.
I'm not ready to make a decision.
We don't have to make a decision tonight, it's just more of a, a good forward, maybe, any other commissioners got anything?
I would, I would in the next, maybe month, next meeting, next month.
We can put it on the next agenda.
Put it on the next agenda and talk about it.
I have a problem with it.
Especially before we get into budgeting and everything for next year.
Definitely.
I would, I would like to know it, that way, going into the budget cycle, if, if we know that we want to do this, then we can account for it at that point, so.
Just, just remember, this won't, if there is an increase, it wouldn't even hit during this budget cycle, it would be the one after.
If we start the proposal this year, it wouldn't be complete until, you wouldn't see any effects of it following year.
Right, but we know that we're going to spend $61,000. So whenever we're doing our budget, we know that, that, that cost should be incurred.
Right, right.
Which would be in your fire budget.
Right, that's, that's what I was getting at, I mean.
So when you do assessments generally, it's presumed that if you end up adopting an assessment, that the cost of these gets spread out among the users of the assessment, so that that's how you end up paying that fee? Which is what we did last time.
Would, would this be a payment cycle or do upon receipt, or how does that use your word?
I don't remember how we did it last time.
I said, I wasn't involved when, when we originally brought them on, so I have to go back through the notes.
That's some information we can have the next week.
Yes, certainly, I can pack them out.
Okay. Moving to our next item, which is number 11, am I right?
Yes, sir.
This is our audit update. I have asked our attorney, Mr. Commando, we had a response from the clerk of courts, and I would, I'm going to ask the attorney to read it into, in, on the record.
He's just reading the first initial one here?
We are reading the one.
March 31st.
I hope we're only reading the main letter.
Just the main letter.
There's a lot of.
Not the attorney's.
Lot of legal jargon in that second letter.
Yeah, I don't even want to read that.
Yes, Mr. Chair, so in a letter dated yesterday, March 31st, 2025, from the clerk of courts states, "Dear Commissioners, as you know, in recent months, there have been a series of conflicts between the commission and my office. While I have made suggestions to correct the issues causing some of these conflicts, the county has not agreed to any of them. Rather than work together, you have instructed the county manager to demand I release my constitutional functions to her supervision. Members have also used a bully pulpit to suggest to the people of our county that my office is somehow responsible for delaying the county audit, and you have set me or my office on your published agenda as if to summon me before the board to endure these members' behavior. Until our conflicts are resolved and this office is afforded proper respect, I do not intend to appear before the Board of County Commissioners. I have received the advice of my counsel as how to best to proceed at this point. I am sharing his memo to me for your review. Simply put, I intend to do my job as clerk in accordance with the laws of this state. I expect the Board of County Commissioners and county administration will do the same. That means I alone will supervise finances, as that is my constitutional duty. I will not permit or otherwise authorize any oversight of finance by any other office or agency. I will pre-audit and post-audit funds and accounts as I deem necessary, and will do so with unimpeded access to the county's financial records. I expect the board to immediately deliver. I expect the board to immediately deliver control over the finance system to this office. If you refuse to deliver that control, then you should prepare to fully fund my budget request when I install similar systems and servers for the clerk's office. As I am the clerk to the board, all minute-keeping functions for the Board of County Commissioners are charged as a matter of law to this office. I will no longer permit anyone else to keep the board's minutes. All such functions should be released to this office immediately, and the board should not approve any minutes that were not prepared through this office. Finally, I ask that you retract all statements and suggestions that have been made in open meetings and behind closed doors suggesting that my office has been directly or indirectly responsible for the delays in completion of the county's annual audit. The auditor, unlike the clerk of court, works for the Board of County Commissioners. This is true as a matter of law and as a matter of the county's engagement with the auditor. If there are delays, it is up to you to work with the auditor to resolve them. If the board will not immediately address these issues, you will leave me with very few alternatives. I have the ability to authorize a lawsuit to bring these issues before a court to be resolved, but I do not want to see our taxpayers' dollars spent on a dispute like that. I am told that other clerks and counties have spent millions of dollars suing each other for these same reasons. Given how clear the rules are for the duties of the county commission and the clerk of court, it would be disappointing to have to go to court over it. I hope you will carefully consider my demands and bring your agency and this office in line with the clear requirements of our state constitution and laws. Regards, Stacy D. Harvey, Clerk of Court, Comptroller.
Thank you, Sarah.
Now I'd open it up for comments.
Okay.
You're the, you're the, what they call it, the czar.
Liaison, or whatever we call it. Been called worse, I can promise. Um, I would like to start with, we had a meeting this afternoon at 3:30, a Teams meeting, and it was with the auditors from James Moore. It'd be Ben Clark, a fellow named Zach Christie with James Moore. And then there was a person with CKH on the, on the call as well. Cheryl Ruiz, Stacy Harvey, myself, and Jeffrey Cox, representing the sheriff's office. Yes, sir, I'm sorry. Um, with, with that, the auditors from James Moore, Ben Clark, who is kind of the lead person there, gave us some pretty, pretty good news. We have not submitted the audit as of now, but the audit is expected to be submitted by the end of next week. So there's, there will be drafts, drafts put together, and the audited financial statements should be completed by the end of next week. So that would be the week of 4/7. Right now, the testing, they are testing the single audit now and preparing the financials. Um, in the single audit that they're working on now, they're working through the FEMA testing. Um, I know there's been some correspondence back and forth requesting information. Um, they, they made it clear that Cheryl had been getting that information right back over to them. And I know from talking with Jeffrey Cox at the sheriff's office, the same had been going on with them too. They're pretty much wrapped up, he hasn't heard anything back on their side, but they were, they were still getting questions as of yesterday. Um, beyond that, the adjusting journal entries should be submitted to the county by the end of next week for the county to import into the ADG software. And the adjusting journal entries would be the, the, basically the adjusting journal entries that the auditors themselves are making in order to match back up to the supporting documentation and correct the financials. Those will have to be submitted back to the counties for us to import so that we can start with a clean slate going into the 23, 24 audit. So we got a clean slate at that point. Um, I talked with them and I went ahead and asked a question, because I know we're still talking about the 22, 23 audit at this point, asking them, hey, where are we at on the 24 audit? So they have to have the adjusting journal entries submitted, that way we can do that. And then from that point, they kind of gave us a May 1st deadline in order to get the supporting documentation from all of the constitutional officers and the county so that they can, I don't, they didn't want to promise that they could have it done by 6:30, but they need to have everything back to them by May 1st in order to potentially hit this year's mark of June 30th to get the audit complete. So we're not three years in a row delinquent. During the call, I asked if CKH, I asked both Cheryl and Stacy, if CKH had any accumulated cost as of now? And neither, neither knew of any accumulated cost as of this point or any cost that we've incurred with them. I know there's been extensive work with CKH, and I don't remember their hourly rate. Do, does anybody know that by chance?
Yeah, I do.
It was in there. But, so I know there's been extensive work there, there's a lot of costs that has been incurred, but we don't know the total cost as of yet. Let's see, the expected blended rate was $115 an hour. So I'm not sure how many hours they've accumulated as of yet. But at $115 an hour, anything's going to, going to add up pretty quick. The, so that was pretty much the, the, the meeting today. From there, I mean, it kind of goes to, you know, we've, we've missed the deadline of 3:31. And I know other commissioners are about to get into it too, as far as the letter we received from J-LAC today. We did receive that letter, was that something y'all wanted to, to share?
Go ahead.
Yes, go ahead, go ahead.
Okay. So we did receive a letter for, a letter from J-LAC this afternoon. And, whoa, that's a bunch of reading. What? Let's see.
Sure answer is they're going to impose sanctions.
Short answer, correct. They are imposing sanctions on Baker County, and withholding shall start on or after May 2nd, 2025. So as of now, we are not in compliance, which we've been not in compliance, but J-LAC is enforcing sanctions as of this point. And they will begin withholding the money at that point. The, one thing I did write down on my notes here, the sales tax will be forfeited. Is one of the, the potentials to be forfeited, and that's not something where they stop, you know, sending y'all's money. That is something that we can potentially lose.
Lose.
At this point, lose and never, and not recover.
It's non-recoverable funds.
Non-recoverable funds, there you go. Um, everything else, the, the funding will be cut off until we get back into compliance. So once everything is submitted, we're in compliance at that point, that is when everything will, you know, the money will then come to us. But sales tax is something that will be forfeited, and we will no longer receive that money. You know what I mean, a non-recoverable fund, as Commissioner Bennett stated. So yeah, I mean, there, there's, there's plenty here. Um, it's, it's an unfortunate circumstance that we're in this position. Um, and it's a little confusing. After reading the letter, I, you know, I, I went back and forth on it. Last week, we had a meeting, I say last week, it was 3:21, we had a meeting, another Zoom call to give an audit update on a Friday. During that meeting, I was asked on why I was reaching directly out to Ben Moore. Not Ben Moore. He does listings, I'm sorry. The consultants, right. I was asked why I was directly seeking their advice and calling them. My thing is, if I'm going straight, I'm going to go straight to James Moore to get my information. Says right here, if there are delays, it is up to you to work with the auditor to resolve them. That's straight from the clerk's letter to the board. The auditor, unlike the clerk of court, works for the Board of County Commissioners. So with that being said, that, that is why I went straight to the auditor myself. So it's a little confusing whenever she, the clerk asked if I went straight to her and, and never reached out to her. I went straight to the horse's mouth because here it says that they work for us. And it is up to us to work with the auditor to resolve them. So that, that is why I went straight to the horse's mouth and got my information. And, uh, I mean, it's, it's just not a good situation for Baker County.
Yes. All right, I wanted to, thank you. I want to kind of walk through the letter as well. First of all, this is where it says, "You've instructed the county manager to demand releasing my constitutional functions." I saw the email that was sent to them, there was no demand. It was requesting a meeting to sit down and have a conversation. So there was no demand, to be clear on that. Second of all, it says, "Members have also used a bully pulpit." She's talking about me, I know who she's talking about, and that's okay. I have no problem with addressing the fact that there was a failure to do the job, plain and simple. It's not about your personality, it's not about an opinion, it's not about, it's an actual fact of where we are at today. The 21, 22-year audit was submitted three days shy, if I recall correctly, exactly three days shy of being two years after the end of, when you're supposed to submit it within nine months. Two years, and this board was not advised ever that it was late in any way, shape, fashion, or form by the clerk, who is the comptroller. That's a fact. I'm not making up, and it's not an opinion. We were not aware that it was late. And when asked, when the clerk was asked about sanctions, she very clearly articulated in the first meeting and reiterated the second meeting that she was completely unaware of the loss of $66,000 in revenue because of the sanctions that are non-recoverable. She was not aware of the finances of this county as the comptroller. That's a simple fact. That's not me making something up, she said she was not aware of that, that her office did not inform her of that. So we continue through this. The fact with the 22 audit, it was submitted three days shy of two years, no knowledge of the board, $66,000 in sanctions. So we move on to the current year. Excuse me, the 23 audit. The 23 audit, that was technically due on June 30th of 2024. We are now more than nine months past the nine-month duration. We are 18 months past the end of the fiscal year. And it's not submitted. And the letter says, "As of now, J-LAC has directed the Department of Revenue and the Department of Financial Services to withhold any funds not pledged for bond debt service satisfaction which are payable to such entity until the entity complies with the law." That is the letter that come out this afternoon that says, "We are now having sanctions for us." So the clerk's letter indicates that she is responsible for the finances of the county, and under no circumstances will anybody else have the ability to do that. She's made that very clear, that she's responsible, her and only her as a constitutional officer. Her signature states that she is the clerk of courts slash comptroller. Comptroller manages the dollars. She's responsible. And yet, she says she has no responsibility for the audit being late. The information from our comptroller was not given to our auditors until the day before our second meeting in February, if I recall the specific date, which I believe was February 13th or 14th. That is seven and a half, excuse me, six, seven and a half months past the nine-month deadline of which the audit was to be completed. So if you calculate this, about 400-some days that they had to do the, to provide the information, and we've given the auditors 45 days, and now we're going to want to blame the auditor for not doing it? In 45 days, when they had 400-plus days to submit the information and hired a second consulting firm at a $115 average rate to do the work that her office is supposed to do and should have done and submitted real early? I'm not making up facts, it's exactly the facts that what it is. So, again, it's not prepared. I will be amazed, truly amazed, if there's any remote chance that the 24 audit is submitted on time. I'm going to be very interested in seeing how much we're spending in current year to pay for all the extra effort that's necessary to correct the work for the 23 audit and the 24 audit. It's going to be a very interesting number to see on what's paid. She's indicated that it is her responsibility to handle that. Nobody else can handle it, she's not going to authorize it. And she says she's not responsible for the audit being late. I fail to understand the logic and the reasoning with that. When she's responsible for providing the financial information for the county to the auditors, and it's not submitted for 17 and a half months after the end of the fiscal year, and then say, well, auditor's, it's the auditor's fault. You, you give them the data seven and a half months after the deadline had passed. How do you say it's the auditor's fault? It says here, "I ask that you retract all statements suggesting that have been made in open meetings and behind closed doors, and that my office has been directly or indirectly responsible for delays in completing the county audits?" How can you say that you have zero responsibility for that? I have no intention of retracting my comments because they're factual today. And furthermore, now she wants to throw down and say, "I'm going to do all the minutes." But she says, "I'm not going to show up at the meetings until it's done." I'm interested to see how those minutes are going. I appreciate you ladies here being here to try to take up the minutes. I, I wish you the best of trying to do that out of the clear blue. It says, "Her office demands respect." First of all, when you know the job, and you do the job, and you do it well, you'll get respect. And right now, this board was kept in the dark on the 23 audit, weren't even aware that there were sanctions. We were not advised of, of this by the clerk, who comes to this meeting, had been in the previous meeting, and never advised that we were so far late. And now you're going to expect, say, you had no involvement. I have another challenge with her response as well. It's very clearly articulated that the auditors report to the county. Our contract with the auditors was executed and approved by this board. And this board signed that, the chairman of the board signed it at the time when it was approved. And the only signature that the clerk had on it was to attest the signatures were accurate and correct and as appropriate people. However, the clerk, who says she don't control the auditor, has signed two contract extensions with the auditors without any approval for this board. So I'm going to ask Rich a question. Do we have a legal contract now, since the extensions that have been signed by this clerk, who didn't have the authority to do so, has signed two extensions with an entity? We could have anybody walk off the street and sign it. Her attesting to it does not give her any authority to act on behalf of this board yet. Two extensions have been signed.
So that's much longer legal analysis than a simple answer. The simple answer is yes, you do have a contract because the auditor, up until recently, would have had no reason to believe that we weren't working together. So, I mean, the detriment would be to the auditor to claim that there wasn't a contract.
Well, understand, I am, I am, I am all in support of paying the auditor for doing the job. And no circumstance am I indicating not do that. What I'm suggesting, as another example of the clerk taking steps to do something that she had no authority to, has this board granted any authority for her to sign contract extensions on behalf of this board?
Not that I'm aware of.
Again, there's a question about respect. I expect somebody to know the job and do the job, and I am not, I have no confidence in that. There's been a lot of public posts posted out on social media, and unfortunately, people keep sending them to me. I ask them not to, I get it anyway. Some of the things that has been, has been said was, why did the commission feel compelled to assign another county commissioner to have to manage this? I would say it's pretty simple. There's no confidence that the clerk is going to keep this board properly informed. It hasn't happened in this duration of time, it didn't happen with the first audit. It's now 17 and a half months past before, and quite frankly, had we not got copied in on those letters, we probably wouldn't have been aware of it this time around, and it would have continued to delay. So with all due respect, we ask somebody on this board to be our liaison because there's no confidence that the information that we're going to get is going to be provided nor accurate because we haven't received information. because we haven't received information on it so far. So, from my perspective, it talks about that we want to turn over the keys, over the, the authority for the full financial software. My position hasn't changed on it. They can have access to the software that's needed, but this county is now exposed, from a cybersecurity standpoint, for exposing this county to outside consultants, outside contractors around the world to do this audit and accessing our system because of the lack of work that's been done so far. I'm not ready to turn over the keys to it. Second of all, if you want to propose a budget next year to buy new software, you can propose it. But that doesn't mean this board has to agree to it. There's always this veil threat that if we don't approve the constitutional officer's budget, they're going to appeal it to the state. Well, if there's, there's an absolute reason why it comes to this board for final approval, it's because we approved the final budget. The state can review it. The state can say they're good with it. They don't have any objections to it. But it comes to this board for final approval, and we cannot, and will not be dictated by the state as an unfunded mandate that we shall approve whatever a constitutional officer provides. I'm not scared of that approach, and I'm not scared of an appeal whatsoever. We have to do what's right for the county and the citizens' tax dollars. Plain and simple. We sit here and talk about trying to raise a gas tax because we've got such deficits and shortfalls because of trying to keep people employed and do what we need to with it. We talk about raising a special assessments, and yet, a constitutional officer has not performed their responsibilities and cost this county $66,000 for the 23 audit. Excuse me, 22 audit. Right?
We don't know the 23.
We don't know what the 23 will be. All I'm saying is, we are put up here, and to then say, there's, she has no responsibility? I, I strongly disagree with that position on it, and I'm not going to change my position on it whatsoever with, with where I'm at. Last notes I had. We're just going to start with a clean slate. Once, once the KMG, the name, the, CKH, what, them. They provide the information back to the county. Who do they provide that back to for it to be uploaded into our system?
CKH has provided that information to James, I mean, they've, they've been inside, you know, ADG working and getting all the information to support, or to provide to James Moore. James Moore will then create the adjusting journal entries, if my understanding is correct, back to the county to upload into our system.
So, who is going to upload it? Is the consultant, or is it the finance department staff going to upload it?
I'm, I'm, I'm not sure on that one.
Again, I'm concerned with it. And I will tell you, make no mistake about it, I believe it is time to make a request for, for a detailed audit. Just as was mentioned earlier here today, it is time for us to take a look at how this is being managed. For us to be this far behind with where we're at two years in a row, a forensic audit needs to be done at that department. I raised this concern four years ago when the issue come up with loot, with our accounts getting hacked because they hadn't been balanced for four years. I raised the concern then that we needed to do a forensic audit. And now, today, I'm going to raise it again. I think there's a real concern with where, how the money is getting used and making sure it's been done correctly. For us to have audits this late, and an audit does not go through every single record, everything account, and they do spot checks on different programs. They do not do every single registry entry of what's happening in this county. And so, I, I think, I am very anxious to see when the audit gets submitted. I'm anxious to see if, what happens from the J-LAC standpoint, and if we do end up getting sanctions and how much we lose. I'm very interested to see how much this has cost in the county so far. And it is not just the financial cost we got. It's the reputational impacts, and it's the, the approach. When we have state representatives and senators trying to push to get funds for us, and when they're having to explain why we can't even do our own audits and keep accurate records, it's an embarrassment to them. And I think the bigger picture is it's the unforeseen and unseen losses that we don't get. It's not what we lose now. It's just what we don't get in the future because of it. And that is a far bigger intangible item that nobody's going to have a number for. But I could, I am very confident that there's implications to us on a longer scale of what we don't get because of this reputational issue.
Yes. On the letter from J-LAC today, we are the only county in Florida. There's three cities, there's two cities, the city of Brooksville, the town of Hillcrest Heights, and the city of Moore Haven. But we are the only county, as of now, that is out of bounds.
Any other comments from the board?
Yes. I'm disturbed by the request for software and hardware control when that department or that area is controlled by a consultant. I'm concerned that outside resources are given opportunities to access the county data and not knowing what countries those are accessing, how they're downloading, anything, any of the technical data that should be required before any of that access is allowed. Understand, this was an emergency situation. Things had to be done. But we should have never gotten into an emergency situation. Here are the accusations that the data has not been allowed, they've not been allowed to access the data by the clerk's office. You've had 18 months. Every time you requested, data was given to the clerk's office anytime they needed it, anytime they requested it. Yes, there have been glitches, but nothing that would have constituted an 18-month delay. If anybody can stand up and justify a few minutes delay, or a day or two delay, and say, "Oh, well, I got 18 months. I, I didn't do it." That's ridiculous to me and completely unacceptable. And you can accuse the board, you can accuse whoever you want to, that you were not able to do your job in a timely manner. That's unacceptable. We recently had a application that had to be filled out for $650,000 for a fire truck that we would be reimbursed just days before that application had to be in, or we lost that $650,000. The application was filled out. Unacceptable. We're, we were in a situation where everybody wants to point fingers, but the facts are, the reports are not done on time. You signed to have the agreements continued with the auditor firms. You're responsible for the finances of the county. You're responsible for providing the information on time. It's time to step up and take responsibility for it. And I agree that I would not vote to, to give additional software or additional hardware expense to an organization that doesn't look like they have control over what they're doing day to day. I agree that we need an audit. We need a detailed audit of everything going on with the county's finances. And the sooner we have that audit, the better.
Mr. Harvey?
All the concerns that's been brought up, I think it's been said and said and said. I'm kind of very disappointed that it came to all this, that we had to have this kind of meeting and confrontation, if there is confrontation, apparently there is. I just want people to do their job, get it done, and let's move on and let the county run. That's what we're here to do. That's what every constitutional officer is here to do. So, I hope this can be resolved quickly. We won't lose funding, and we can move on.
Yeah, I would agree. I think everything pretty well has been said today. There's no rehashing. The same thing over and over again. I'm disappointed but not surprised that the audit wasn't submitted on time. I think Commissioner Mobley and everything he's done to try to work the situation. I think it's always a good idea when you're in a situation like this to have many people involved as you can. So, I really, I don't really care what Facebook says or anybody else says. I do what I think I should do and what I got elected to do. I got elected to take care of the county. And whatever, whoever I got to upset, it's not on purpose, but I have a job to do. And if you don't like the way I do it, I can't help that. But my job is to protect the county and the funds of the county. And that's what I'm trying to do. The reason I put Mr. Comit, Commissioner Mobley over is because I knew he would stay on top of it. And he has. He's provided us with great information to date, and I appreciate it. And, and the citizens of this county should appreciate it. That we got a commissioner that would step up and be in, in between and try to make things right. And he's, he's tried to do that. Today, or yesterday, when I received this letter, I wasn't angry. I wasn't upset. It was expected. Because I've been threatened by this same person before in, in her office. So, to be threatened is okay. I'm a man, grown man. I can take threats. I can take people saying that I should do this, I should do that. Everybody's got an opinion. We all have opinions. But we also have jobs to do. And I feel like I done mine. The day before J-LAC had their first meeting, I received an email with the first time in two and a half years that this board has even noted we was that far behind. So, a lot of people dropped the ball. I wanted to make sure, as the chairman, that I didn't drop the ball. So, I got involved. And I got everybody involved that I could. When, when something come to me, it went to the board. When I needed the help, because I can't be at every meeting, I recruited some help. And if I'm wrong for doing that, you got your opinion. But I would do it again. And I will do it again. I'm not too proud of a person to say when I need help. And this is more his specialty than mine. So, I think I recruited, and now that I heard his report tonight, I knew that I'd done the right thing. I recruited the right man to help me. Because he taught me a few things that today I didn't even know. So, I appreciate it. But to sit here and read this letter and it say, "What I have heard so many times in so many meetings and so many behind closed-door meetings that I don't really have and talk about people, I'm not that type of a person." Sit there and say that I'm responsible for everything. I'm responsible, I'm responsible, I'm responsible. And then send me a letter saying I'm not responsible. What are you? Are you responsible or you're not responsible? Don't be wishy-washy. She's not going to come to the meetings anymore. And I'm fine with that. I have no problem with Sheriff never here. I don't ever see none of the constitution here. And it doesn't bother me. But, this is her job. And she, and if you go on and read the letter we got from her attorney, I guess we're going to deal through attorneys now and not through, I'm not sure how this is going to work. The letter from her attorney is long. It's words I don't even know what half of them means. So, I'm not, I'm not an attorney. I got, that's reading, we got this guy over here on the responsibilities of a clerk. And believe it or not, an audit is responsible, be able to correct. Because you get, when you get audited, they audit the finances. They don't audit this board for what we've, decisions we make. They audit the books. And when they request information from the board, who supplies them the information? County manager? Do you provide the financial information to the audit? Who does?
County finance.
County finance. They're not responsible. It's sad that we find ourselves in this situation because Ms. Stacy Harvey is my friend, and she will always be my friend. People can say I don't like her, but that's a lie. Because I do like her, I like her family. But she does have a job to do. I fired my brother one time.
Only once?
Once. Now, he's been working for me for 20 years. But when he came back, it made a difference. He was a different man. When it comes to business, you have to separate what's your job out of the family. Your job out of your friends. You got a job to do. Just because I don't agree with you don't mean I don't like you. I don't agree with him half the time. But I like him.
Most of the time?
He's my brother. And I don't agree with the way that this is being handled by the clerk of courts. Don't mean I don't like her. Because I do. I think she's a good person. All I'm saying is, and like I said before, I practically beg you, just do your job. Get us out of this. I'm not being mean, if I'm begging. I beg the auditors. I beg the people in Tallahassee. Because it don't affect me, me personally. It affects the county. We're talking the county taxpayers' money. Sales taxes, grants. We're talking millions of dollars. This could be devastating to this county. So, whatever I got to do besides, well, I would do that too. I'd probably get on my hands and knees and beg, but I'm not going to do that tonight. All I'm doing is asking you to do your job. You got elected to do a job. You got elected to be the comptroller of this county. Be the comptroller of this county. If you want to take the minutes, take the minutes. I don't care. Just make sure they're right. And I hope it don't take you 18 months to get the minutes back to the board so we can approve them. With these two ladies, I don't think it would. I think they're on the spot. And when I seen them, I knew. They were from the clerk's office, and it didn't hit me till later on. Because I see them all the time when I pull the permits over there. That's been kind of, when I go over there and get the notice of commencement. I go in the clerk's house all the time. Good people over there. And most, for the most part, y'all do a great job. Great job. But let me tell you, people, this is unacceptable by any means. It would be unacceptable for you run three years without balancing your checkbook and see how much money you got in the bank. I'm going to agree with the commissioners. I don't think it's appropriate time right now. But I think once we get through the audits and we get that stuff behind me, we need to do an audit of our books for the county to make sure everything's the way it should be. All the Ts, Is, All the Funds. We have so many funds. We need to make sure that that money just pulled out of the right fund into the right place. Get a clean slate and then build from there. And I hope, when this is all said and done, we still have a relationship with the clerk of courts because she is my friend. Her family is my friend. But it doesn't, being my friend doesn't alleviate you from your job. You still have a job to do. I have a job to do. My job is the budget for the county. And I'm not sure how we're going to work that now that the clerk says that she's not going to come over here anymore to the board when they are the ones that present us the budget. We'll leave that up to you, this commander, to figure that out for us. But with that, I just hope and pray that we get through this. We get all the audits called up. We do a great audit. If we got to bring the state in to get involved, we're not in this position anymore. This is not a comfortable position to be in as a board member. I know it's not comfortable for Ms. Harvey and being in the position. And it's not a good position for the county in general. We're the only county out of 69 counties in the state of Florida that can't submit an audit on time. And there's a lot of counties smaller than we are. And is there anything else to be said?
Mr. Chairman, I do have one.
Yes.
I'm reluctant to make this statement or ask this question, but I'm going to because I feel like staff needs some clear direction on this. In regards to the minutes, there are eight committees in total, including the Board of County Commissioners. I believe that the direction at this point is that the clerk will take over all eight of those committees.
Just right here, demand the Board of County Commissioners to reduce all minute keeping functions.
Our staff does not take another minute.
Yes, sir. Just want to make sure that's clear for the record.
Send the committee meetings over to the clerk. And it's her responsibility to do all the minutes of every meeting.
Yes, sir. Understood.
But you make sure that she knows the time, the dates, and all that.
Yes, sir. Certainly.
Make sure she signs it in an email.
Yes, sir.
And sends it back to the county. So we have record that she knows when and where these meetings are being held.
Yes, sir. Certainly.
Mr. Chairman, may I?
Yes.
Rich, is there any type of timeline by which minutes are supposed to be developed and approved statutorily for these different meetings?
That's a good question. I don't know that off the top of my head. I'll look. I'm not aware of one because I've seen, I mean, just in many other meetings that I've been in, I've seen some minutes that have been approved sometimes three and four months later.
It'd be interesting, if you don't mind, just checking that to let us know. Is there a particular timeline by which they have to be approved?
Be interesting to know.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
That was my.
That's all you had?
Yes. Just want to make sure that was clear.
All right. Let's move into our appendant business report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If I may, I'm going to talk about council on aging since we have some issues going on there and give an update on that. And then we'll talk about the rest of the report. So a big thanks to Commissioner Anderson, to Commissioner Mobley, to COA Board, to our county maintenance staff, and the city of McLinnie. We have had dozens of people on this project over the last several weeks trying to get some type of resolution to it. So this week, we did get an update. The city actually had their staff out there this week doing some more testing and looking at us for us because obviously water flow is part of their expertise. That's something they deal with quite frequently. So we believe that the work on the backflow preventer has improved the water flow to the property as a whole. And we have seen some increases there. So we're going to talk building at a time. The transportation center, which is the oldest building on the property, that's the first building that was there. We have replaced the toilets. There were low-flow toilets there that only had about a gallon and a half flush capacity. They've been changed out by county staff to three gallons. We actually believe that has resolved our problem along with the increased water flow from the backflow preventer there. We're not seeing any issues. We'll continue to monitor it. But it looks as though that situation may be resolved. There are some issues with a couple of the sinks in that location, but that is simply the screens on the faucets need to be cleaned. And so county maintenance is going to go by and take care of those. They might spray a little funky when you turn them on, but obviously that's not related to that water flow issue. The bus wash does need to be able to pump 13 gallons a minute to meet our requirements. Prior to the backflow preventer being serviced, we were not at that capacity. However, this week, we have reached, the testing has shown around 16 or 17 gallons a minute. So we're exceeding what we need. The contractor has been notified. And there was a person that had to come out and calibrate that system. And we've requested that they come back out and look at it now. But we believe that that has also resolved our problem with the bus wash. The new building, the Senior Life Enrichment Center, we are still having an issue with the toilets there. Multiple flush attempts to make sure that things are going down. Again, we believe that that is probably related to energy efficiency, low-flow toilets. We have asked for that to be checked again. If they are the one and a half gallons like we had in the other building, it's more than likely just not sufficient to do what needs to be done. So we're going to make sure, and if that's the case, they just need to be changed out. In addition to that, there is a handheld nozzle at the kitchen sink that appears to maybe be the same problem. Maybe a low-flow energy efficiency piece of equipment that we believe is a problem there. So we're making really great progress again, thanks to everybody. Like I said, everybody has kind of offered a solution. And we've worked through multiple different approaches and multiple angles, but I think we're at a point where we can say that this one's about wrapped up. There is one still outstanding item. I know that the dishwasher in the new building is still not working right. That's something to do with the installation or either the way, or just a defective piece of equipment. We actually, our contractor had a FaceTime meeting with the manufacturer to look at the setup. We believe that that's just something that's defective there. Like I said, again, not related to the water flow. So like I said, we've been diligently working through that. And it seems as though that we are at a resolution to those problems. So we'll keep you guys informed as we continue to move through those projects. But again, that's good information that we've received this week. So like I said, big thanks to everyone that's come out and helped with that. Moving down into the St. Mary's Cove Boat Ramp. We discussed this earlier tonight. Like I said, just in the way that that project will be advertised will allow for the repair to the existing boat ramp, which will satisfy FWC. And then the construction of a new boat ramp. So obviously, the old boat ramp will be used in the meantime. FWC was very pleased with our desire to move the boat ramp. They agreed that the location was just not a good location, that we were going to continue to see problems at that existing facility that's left there. So they were very encouraged to hear that we're working on a solution to that. And then the Phase Two for the design of a restroom and lighting facility there. That is working through Mr. Clint Capes. I don't know if you guys have had the opportunity to meet him or not, but Clint's team is working on that for us. We're at about a 40% design completion right now. FWC requires their review at 80%, so we're pretty close to that review. And we'll present that all back to you guys as well as part of that step. So again, it is a slow, snail's pace process. We hate that it's been this way. But obviously, as we've discussed every other week, sitting here in this room, we're trying to keep that one moving in a manner that will allow us to receive reimbursement for FEMA on these projects. Last commission meeting, we actually got a really nice update from the chief and assistant chief on the Kyler Fire Station. Went some nice pictures. Chief Planton must have already left, but thanks to him for keeping us updated on all of that. Next item on the list is the Nav Sports Complex. For those that were able to come out, I know we had a lot of people that were doing a lot of things and very busy. But this last Saturday, March 29th, was opening day. It was very nice to stand out on that new field and to see all of those kids out there enjoying themselves. I heard a lot of really, really great comments. Of course, we're not finished yet. We do have signage all across the facility that talks about Phase Two improvements. But as soon as Little League season is complete, towards the end of June, we're going to start Phase Two construction, which is restrooms, concession stands, additional seating, batting cages. We've got more to do there. So we're really excited about that. And I encourage the public to go walk that park and take a look at it. From a year ago to where we are today, it's a drastic improvement. It's very nice, very nice facility. And next on the list is the courthouse generator. Again, this was awarded back in February. The contracts have been signed with the installer and the product has been ordered. We are just waiting for that to be delivered so that install can take place. And then the Sanderson Center. I have not been able to touch base with Mr. Doug Moore. However, we did get, like we talked about the last meeting, the well has been replaced and all of that project is done. We're working now internally on a quote for windows and doors so that we can see that happen and get the building more secure than it is now. And again, we'll stay in communication with Mr. Doug Moore on his volunteer partnership on trying to get some more projects going on there as well. So if there's any other specific questions, I'll be happy to answer them, but that's kind of the overview.
I do have one quick question.
Yes, sir.
All the issues of the COA facility.
Yes, sir.
The designers that put all of these low-flowing things in, did they not take a look at the flow? I mean, I guess I'm a little bit stunned the fact that they've designed all these facilities with all these low flows, but yet it's not working.
It's not adequate. Yes, sir. And the confusion for me is that it's different engineers, different contractors, different plumbers, but...
Note to self, for us, for future projects, this idea of these low flows, that's fantastic in concept, but as you can see, it's costing us more money to go back and take them out, put in the correct fixtures to make it function. Functionality's got to take place over efficiency.
Yes, sir.
Doesn't function, no matter how efficient it is.
I have talked to Doug Moore a couple of times. He's made a lot of strides toward getting all the materials and everything he needs to fix the bathrooms at the Sanderson Center. But we've got to have an architect to do, to make sure everything's compliant.
Engineering.
And once we have that engineering done, I feel confident that Mr. Moore will get those bathrooms completed. And he's offering to do it for nothing. So I think it's a good opportunity for us. But we need to find an architect that can get it where we're compliant.
Do we not have that access to one of our interim consulting firms? Because this is a small, this is a small cause.
Yes, sir.
And this falls, this is under CNA Consultants Competitive Negotiations Act because it's certainly going to be less than $35,000. We ought to be able to either get direct quotes or go through one of our GEC contracts to be able to do that simple service. So that would be my suggestion is.
Yes, sir.
Let's find out what we got to have done in order to move that forward. Especially if we got somebody that's going to do it for no cost for us, for just doing some of the plans to get the permits, be able to pull it in. That'd be my suggestion to look at.
Yes, sir. Certainly.
I hate to jump back to the COA bus wash, but the backflow did seem to help everything. And so one of the things I want to do is let's look at maybe an annual or biannual service to it. Just make sure that stays up to date. I feel like that was a huge issue, so.
Yes, sir. Certainly. We actually have a contract now for the Central County Fire Station. We've talked about piggybacking, or not piggybacking, but adding that on as an additional location. Yes, sir.
Okay. Thank you.
Anything else?
No, sir.
Special report over $5,000.
Not unless there's any comment.
American Rescue Plan update?
No, sir. No updates at this time.
County manager.
I have one quick thing. At each one of your seats, you will see a nice blue bracelet. I'm actually wearing it so that you guys can, I can model it for you all. But April is actually Child Abuse Prevention Awareness Month. And so some people that are coordinating this drop this information off to each one of you. I just want to make sure that you saw that and share that publicly. We've got the information. If anyone is interested, we'd be happy to share it. But I just want to make sure that you guys are aware.
Proper arm to put it on.
I don't think there is a proper one, but looking at it, I'm not sure it's going to fit on you.
Left or right? Yeah, I can't even get it on my hand.
They put the pinwheels out in front of the courthouse, too.
Yes, yes.
It is not going to work. I won't have any blood going to my hand. Anyone more that would wear it? I can't wear it. It's too small for my hand.
I like wearing beer colors.
Well, I would have a big hand by the night. Anything else, Monsieur?
No, sir. Not for me.
Mr. Commander, you have anything for us?
Just to answer your earlier question. So there is no statutory or legal provision as to when minutes have to be provided. There's actually a 2002 Attorney General's opinion because there was a municipality that wanted to approve the minutes before their commission had seen them. And the Attorney General's office said you can't do that. And it actually highlights that there's no specified time. But it's considered part of the government in the Sunshine Act. So as part of that, that's, it's referred to as a step in the decision-making process. So in doing that, it's really the public's right to have information to understand what happened at the meetings. And that's all I have.
So there's my deadline.
There's not a formal deadline, but it's the right of the public, just like they have a right to open meetings.
So the longer they're delayed and provided to us, the more we may forget what was said and done. The less chance we're going to have to correct them. And we're just going to have to accept what we need.
Well, it could be argued that it's a sunshine law violation. I mean, that's the bottom line.
This is not going on a good path.
That's not the news I wanted to hear, Rich. Commissioner Hartman?
The only thing I've got is Little League fields were great. I went to openings every weekend. It was just amazing.
Good deal. I wish I could have been there.
It didn't look that great. And there was four tee-paw fields. That was pretty cool. And we used to play on one. And we'd have to share the girls' fields or the boys' senior league. That was nice. That's all I have.
I agree with this. Little League ball fields was an amazing outing. I never imagined there'd be that many people that active there. Some of the people that were there, like Jack Baker and Farm Bureau, giving away food. And it was a great venue. And Ms. Ladonna put on a great event at the fairgrounds. And if you missed that opportunity, I encourage you to go there and come and events. That's it.
And not have it the third weekend of the month every time. I'm not in the country the third weekend.
We were very limited on dates, trying to avoid Easter. Easter was, Easter and spring break were both, they weren't when they were supposed to be. And it just messed everything up.
It did.
I agree.
I just have a question as a follow-up. Fairgrounds roof, what's ever happened with that?
Well.
I can tell you what it looks like.
I can tell you what it looks like, too.
What it looks like. He has stopped responding to all communication from both the Fair Association president and myself. I have repeatedly, over the last several weeks, tried to get in touch with him, and I've not had any success. I don't know that there's a legal recourse for that.
What's the warranty on it?
I'll have to go back and pull the contract.
One year, two years, five years?
Probably one if I had to.
And how long's it been?
Since 2021, I believe. I'll pull it to verify. Don't quote me on that. But yes, sir. Transparency, I asked him about fixing where we know it's leaking at. And he said, "Well, I can fix it for you, but you can't call your building official after I'm done." And I said, "No, sir. Then I don't need to hear anything else you have to say to me." And then he stopped responding to my phone calls.
He sounds like a roofer.
Yeah, yeah.
Long as it don't leak, eh?
Yeah. Don't ask me to come out here. He said, "You can't get it inspected when I'm done." I said, "Well, then I don't need you to tell me anymore about that."
Weird response, knowing where you work.
He's a good roofer, then.
So unfortunately, it does not look good. The building itself, when you go in it, does not look good. I mean, there's no other way to say that. So I hope that we can address that through this grant process, you know, if we're successful to get that. And looking at a re-roof and doing it the right way with that ticket booth being addressed the way that it needs to be and not just covered over. Unfortunately, get what you pay for sometimes with these low bids.
Commissioner Mobley.
Yeah, I wanted to echo the statements on the Little League fields, on how nice they were. And I do want to thank Brian Richardson, Brian...
And I do want to thank Brian Richardson, Brian Rowell, Randall.
Randall Connor.
Randall Connor, and those involved in that. I know we, you know, it still costs a lot of money, but they, those three helped tremendously on keeping costs down, and a lot of, a lot of costs was donated as well. So I definitely want to thank those three and everybody else that was involved in that.
Yeah.
Because I mean, I got many phone calls this weekend on how, how nice it looked.
Yeah.
So we definitely want to thank those guys. Other than that, I, I think we're good, you know, we're still rolling, so.
Keep us in touch. Stay on it.
I will. We got, we got an audit update Friday, and then I advise James Moore today of anything that's submitted next week, let me know that way. Soon as we get it submitted, I can report back to the board through Sarah and make sure everybody's aware.
Sounds good.
Yes, sir.
Well, I was sorry I didn't be, wasn't able to make opening ceremony. I was on airplane flying back from Nicaragua, so I wasn't able to make it. I've been by there many times, and something that Baker County can be proud of. And I do want to appreciate the guys that's been helping.
Oh, yeah.
And I want to appreciate the Baker County Little League, what they do is a ton of work. I mean, they put a lot of money, time, and investment into them fields also. And, and our travel ball teams, they do a great job, so I want, I appreciate them, and I think it's only going to grow from here. Maybe one day we can get, we got bigger field, a bigger complex, but that is a great complex. Who, who designed that? Who was the designer?
On, on the, the changes, that would be everybody that was involved, sat around and come up with it. It wasn't anything official, but.
Okay.
There was a lot of design build that went on.
Yeah.
But it had to be in that place.
Brian Richardson and Brian Rowell, primarily. Yes, sir.
I just, I just want to say whoever did, they done a, the good job.
They did an excellent job with it. Yes, sir.
Because that stuff just don't fall together, Commissioner. It takes work.
Yes, sir.
And you can tell it was done with a lot of love and care to it, what just throwed together.
Yes.
And I appreciate that. And I don't have anything else, so I'll take a motion to adjourn.